Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna be just a few more minutes. We're trying to get everybody in. We still have some people in line out there, so we want to make sure everybody gets in, so please bear with us, and we'll start momentarily. Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and we will call this meeting to order. Little Rock Planning Commission here. Welcome everybody this afternoon, and we apologize that we don't have enough seats, and we're gratefully thankful for you all to be here, and we have another commissioner coming in, so we'll give him just a second to come on up. And while we're doing that, we're gonna go ahead and let's go and get a roll call here since, uh, to determine a quorum here. Yes, sir.
This is a roll call vote for the Little Rock Planning Commission meeting for November 14th, 2024. Roll call vote, Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Hart? Hodges? McDonald? Commissioner Person? Commissioner Samad? Commissioner Vogel? Commissioner Baxter? Commissioner Russell? Commissioner Vickers? We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Let's move this right along, and we have a, we have a nice sizable regular agenda today, so I presume all the commissioners have had an opportunity to review the minutes, and if so, if I can get a, uh, motion.
Motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I have a motion in second. Can I get a roll call vote, please? Yes, sir. Brown? Hart? Hodges? McDonald? Person? Samad? Vogel? Baxter? Russell? Vickers? Minutes are approved. All right, moving right along, before we start the reading of the consent agenda, we actually have seven, so we have a quorum here, but, if we would've had six, then we would've had offer for deferral for next month, just in case, because of the fact is, if all commissioners do not vote yes upon your action item, then it would fail. So Commissioner Brown, we really appreciate you being here, we understand.
Yeah, apologies to my tardiness, also Commissioner McDonald actually was parking out there when I got, when I pulled in, so, we'll have eight shortly.
Well, let the record show for her attendance, I'm certain that she would be here momentarily. All right, so at this particular time, Monty?
Following is the consent agenda, Little Rock Planning Commission meeting of November 14th, 2024. Item number three, file number Z-10,032 is being deferred to the December 12th, 2024 agenda as the required notifications to surrounding property owners were not completed. Item number six, Z-6886D is being withdrawn at the request of the, of the property owner. Item seven, Z-9,500C is being deferred to the December 12th, 2024 agenda as the required notifications to surrounding property owners were not completed. Item eight, Z-10,055 is being deferred to the February 13th, 2025 agenda at the request of the applicant. Item fifteen, Z-10,066 is being deferred to the December 12th, 2024 agenda as the required notifications to surrounding property owners were not completed. Item twenty-four, Z-10,061 is being deferred to the December 12th agenda at the request of the applicant. Item thirty-one, Z-10,059 is being deferred to the December 12th, 2024 agenda at the request of the applicant. And item thirty-three, Z-10,074 is being deferred to the December 12th agenda as the required notifications to surrounding property owners were not completed. Item number one is being moved to the regular agenda for discussion. Or, excuse me, the next items after, after item number one being moved would be items on consent approval. The first would be item four, Z-10,045, Williams duplexes, conditional use permit, 4224 Cobb Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP subject to compliance with comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item number five, Z-10,049 Wyatt Accessory Dwelling CUP, 10,015 Calhoun Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item number nine, Z-10,034 Hawk, STR2 PDC, 2014 North Cleveland Street. Staff recommends approval of the PDC zoning request subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item number ten, G-23491 Partial Alley Right-of-Way Abandonment, Block 10 Woodruff's Edition. Staff recommends approval of the requested partial alley right-of-way abandonment subject to the alley being retained as a utility easement as requested by the utility companies noted in paragraph E of the agenda staff report. Item eleven, S-1883B Shallow Grove, Phases Two and Three Revised Preliminary Platte, south of Oxford Valley, south of the Oxford Valley Drive, Appomattox Drive intersection. Staff recommends approval of the requested revised preliminary plat subject to compliance with comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Items twelve, thirteen, and fourteen are being moved to the regular agenda for discussion. Item sixteen, Z-10,076 UDDC Number One Duplexes CUP at 4220 West 26th Street. Staff recommends approval of the CUP request subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item seventeen, File Number Z-10,077 UDDC Number Two Duplexes, CUP 25, 2615, 2617 Abigail Street. Staff recommends approval of the CUP subject to compliance with comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item eighteen, Z-10,078 UDDC Number Three Duplex CUP, 4700 West 28th Street. Staff recommends approval of the CUP request subject to compliance with comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item nineteen, Z-10,079 UDDC Number Four Duplexes, Conditional Use Permit, 4400, 4408 West 24th Street. Staff recommends approval of the CUP subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item twenty, Z-10,080 UDDC Number Five Duplex, CUP 2301 South Elm Street. Staff recommends approval of the CUP request subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item twenty-one, Z-10,081 UDDC Number Six Duplex, CUP 2001 Abigail Street. Staff recommends approval of the CUP subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item twenty-two, Z-10,082 UDDC Number Seven Duplex, CUP 2024 Lewis Street. Staff recommends approval of the CUP request subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item number twenty-three, Z-10,075 Mandani Holdings Event Centers, CUP 2900, 3100 South University Avenue. Staff recommends approval of the CUP zoning request subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item twenty-five, Z-10,072 Glover PDI 3611 Mayville Pike. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDI zoning subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Items twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight are being moved to the regular agenda for discussion. Item twenty-nine, Z-10,085 Brown PDR 1705, 1709 Boyce Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDR zoning subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item thirty, A-349 and Z-10,089 Elopac Annexation and I-3 Heavy Industrial Zoning, 6101 Zuber Road. Staff recommends approval of the annexation and zoning to I-3 Heavy Industrial. And item thirty-two is being moved to the regular agenda for discussion. That concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Monty. We've heard the reading of the consent agenda. If we don't have any questions or comments by any of the commissioners, I would love to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted and read with all staff's recommendations in the agenda staff report.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Can I get a roll call for vote for the consent agenda, please? Commissioner Brown? Hart? Hodges? McDonald? Person? Samad? Vogel? Baxter? Russell? Vickers? Consent agenda has been approved. All right, thank you. If your item was on the consent agenda, and it's been approved, you are more than welcome to stay, but at this time, you can leave at this time if your item was on there. However, if your item was moved to the regular agenda, then obviously you definitely will need to stay for the record. On that one, we will have the order as follows. We will have two and 2.1 read. After that, it will go in numerical order, and the numbers as follows is one, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and thirty-two. So at this particular time, under item number two and 2.1, under the LU 2024-19-01, if the applicant is present, please make your way to the podium. And while we're there, Monty, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gosden will present the land use plan amendment, then I'll present the rezoning, and you can discuss them simultaneously and take two votes.
Sounds good. All right, sir, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Bill Spivey. I'm here today with Tim Daters on behalf of the applicant, Potlatch Celtic Real Estate. We first appeared before the commission at your September meeting, and as a result of that meeting, sought and you granted graciously a deferral to give us time to go back and meet with the property owners associations and residents in an effort to try and reach some sort of an accommodation or agreement with them. Those meetings were held with the Schuman and Tournay POA boards on September 4th and 5th, and then a subsequent meeting after the September 10th Planning Commission meeting on September 26th. We were unsuccessful in reaching any agreement with the residents, however, as a result of that meeting, the applicant voluntarily agreed to a number of advancements, a number of changes or adjustments to the proposed plan and expressed its desire to amend the proposed plan to include these changes. I think you will find those changes at the end of the current staff write-up. This included a number of areas, including a list of permitted and conditional uses that will not be allowed in connection with the rezoning, and these are in your staff report. A wood fence eight feet tall is allowed by ordinance or variance to be constructed on the north side of the 50-foot open space buffer adjacent to each site as it is developed, and let me again reiterate that this is an open space zoned area. It's not a voluntary discretionary area. It will be zoned open space. During the initial landscaping of the tracks, any open spaces within the 50-foot open space buffer will be filled with native tree saplings and seedings to sort of beef it up, and no tract will be cleared until a lot is sold and proposed construction is imminent. So that was one of the developments that's occurred since we met with you. We were here again in October. At that time, because there were only eight members, we received another deferral, and we're here today to bring this matter before you with our thanks. In addition, since then, the applicant commissioned a traffic study by Peters and Associates, a copy of which I believe Mr. Moore has. I don't know if you've been provided with a copy of it, but we'll refer to that a little later in the, in the proceeding. As I suggested, it's been our hope that the neighborhoods would be inclined to support the rezoning, but from subsequent communications as to with cities as well as Mr. Daters, not appear that an agreement can be reached with regard to our client's request. However, before deferring our remaining time until after others have spoken, we would like to reiterate that the application before you today is the result of thoughtful consideration by Potlatch Celtic of a number of possible uses of the subject property, and we do believe that the proposed rezoning as neighborhood commercial is the best use of the property in view of the surrounding area and other nearby uses. We also believe the staff's recommendation of approval is based upon the city's own evaluation of the area and other possible uses. Tim, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I think just a general description of the preliminary. Tim Daters, I am going to hand out just a general description of the area that shows the original preliminary plat of this property. And originally, this subdivision encompassed about 488 acres. Of that 488 acres, about 155 acres has been set aside already as open green space. So within this overall Chalamont subdivision, which we call Chenal Valley Phase 18, the total area is 488 acres. We've already set aside about 155 acres in permanent green space for the subdivision.
And what Tim's referring to, of course, are the adjacent residential areas, not the property that's specifically before you in the application today. Unless you have questions right now of us, we would like to reserve the balance of our time and respond after others have spoken.
Thank you.
All right, Monty, would you like to do the reading, or would we like to go into any oppositions on that particular one? All right, let's go.
Item number two is LU 2024, 2024-19-01. It's a land use amendment to amend the map, the land use map from RL to NC. The applicant, the applicant requests a land use amendment from residential low density to neighborhood commercial. The site is approximately 9.87 acres. The application is located along the southeast and southwest intersection of Highway 10 and Chalamont Drive in the Chenal Planning District. This land use amendment application accompanies a zoning map amendment request. It is the applicant's intent to rezone the site to neighborhood commercial District C1, to neighborhood commercial District C1, and that file number is 100Z-10036. The applicant area is located on the south side of Highway 10 on the outskirts of the city limits. The property is located on the northern boundary of the Chenal Planning District with the Barrett Planning District directly, directly to the north across Highway 10. The property has about 1,700 feet of frontage along Highway 10. The major personal, commercial areas in this area sit on Highway 10 and Chenal Parkway and the Rowling Road-Chenal Parkway intersections, and there are also several smaller commercial nodes proposed, proposed at intersections of major roads along Highway 10 and Chenal Parkway. The Barrett Planning District also concentrates non-residential uses along Highway 10. Highway 10 and Chalamont intersection is a collector arterial intersection. Collectors provide connections to arterials and to the neighborhoods, while arterial's primary function is to move traffic through the area. Most of the land south of Highway 10 is being primarily developed with single-family subdivisions and will have direct access to the application site from Chalamont Drive. This allows the application site to function as a traditional neighborhood commercial area. Staff recognizes this intersection as a potential business area. Staff recommends approval of the applicant's request to amend the land use designation from residential low density to neighborhood commercial. Thank you.
Thank you, Germany. All right, so, Monty?
All right, so, Monty.
Item two point one is the rezoning application, file number Z ten thousand thirty-six. The applicant proposes to rezone the two tracts of land at the southeast and southwest corners of Highway ten and Chalamont Drive. The applicant proposes to rezone three point seven acres at the southeast corner of the intersection to C one with eight tenths of an acre of O S zoning, which would be a fifty-foot wide strip between the proposed C one and the single-family lots to the south. The applicant also proposes to rezone the six point zero nine acres at the southwest corner of the intersection, also to C one with one point six acres of O S zoning, which is also a fifty-foot wide open space between the proposed C one and the single-family lots to the stat, to the south. Staff is in support of the requested rezoning as amended by the applicant to add the conditions, and staff recommends approval of the requested C one and O S rezoning.
All right, thank you, Monty. Being that the applicant deferred their time and to have the opposition, I'm going to go ahead and have the opposition to come up and speak. We have a host of cards for two and two point one, if that's suitable for the applicant here. All right, and on the cards here, since we have a number of cards, if we have a representative to speak or want to speak, or I can just call out the names, because we have some that say it's not speaking, and just a reminder, for support or opposition, there is a total of twenty minutes, up to twenty minutes for both sides. So I'm sitting here with twenty cards, probably more, but if I'm sitting here with twenty cards, essentially, would each person would have a minute for on both sides. So I would call out the first name here is Eric Acheson.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. Good to see you again. My name is Eric Acheson. I'm a resident of twenty-five Schuman Court, and I'm also the Treasurer and Vice President of the Schuman Court Property Owners Association. Thank you for the opportunity to continue to communicate our opposition to this rezoning. I concur fully with those that are going to speak after me, friends and neighbors before you today, that the proposed rezoning of the southeast and southwest corners of Highway ten and Chalamont Drive from residential low density to C one neighborhood commercial and open space continues to present serious concerns for the residents of Schuman and all of Chalamont neighborhoods, as well as significant public safety issues. In an effort to be good stewards of your time and our allotted twenty minutes for comments, I'd like to ask all those in attendance today who are in opposition to these proposals to please stand and remain standing as long as possible, so the Commission can visually see the opposition before them. On the night of September twenty-six, Schuman and Tournay homeowners and P O A leadership met with the representatives of Potlatch Deltec and White Dater to discuss our concerns. I'll present some of all of those concerns that continue to be major issues for the residents of Schuman, Tournay, and other neighborhoods along Chalamont Drive. First and foremost is public safety. As you may remember, my children and my wife utilize these pathways safely to walk along Chalamont to school at Robinson Elementary as much as possible. Many days, the Plaski County Sheriff's deputies tell me that they love seeing our kids walk to school, and I thank them in return for their service. Polished Deltec representatives in several neighborhoods questioned why the applicants had not questioned or conducted a traffic study in this area, and so we also voiced our firm opposition to the current plan for commercial entrances to be built on Chalamont. This request was ignored as far as the request being to not put in commercial entrances on Chalamont. Entrances on Chalamont would greatly complicate traffic patterns and bring increased danger to us and our children who use these pathways for transportation and recreation. The day after our meeting on September twenty-seventh, a representative from Potlatch Deltec parked on Chalamont Drive for a period of time, and while I was on a plane to Atlanta that morning and could not take our children to school, I know he witnessed the backup congestion that occurs each day at that intersection. A neighbor provided me with aerial views that showed the intensity of traffic at this intersection, and just, and I also shared these with the Commission via Little Rock Planning email, and so hopefully, you can visually see what is absent from the traffic study provided by White Daters. The day, and then so Tim from White Dater stated in our meeting that Cantrell Road is a commercial corridor. He stated the same thing in our initial meeting with you all, and I have found no such formal designation of this area by the City of Little Rock. Principal arterial, I understand, commercial corridor does not exist. I argue that this portion of Highway ten is in no way, shape, or form a commercial corridor. They are only attempting to create a commercial corridor through these rezoning requests. I urge you to realize that there does not need to be any additional commercial density in this area, and this is in fact a neighborhood school area, if I can also apply a label to where I live. To add to the points made last month and others that you'll hear today, trust and respect of these developers is questionable, and our meeting on September twenty-sixth, we discussed why this land should be developed at all, with many of our neighbors questioning the need for this green space to go away. These parcels provide a serene and natural buffer that epitomizes the aesthetic of Chenal Valley. Near the end of our discussion, a Polished Deltec representative explained, "Well, there must be something you like about living here," to which nearly the entire room responded with, "Yes, the natural green space that exists." Another point of contention occurred that night when a resident was questioning how the plans of Polished Deltec do not coincide with the values they present to the public or the Little Rock Future Land Use Plan to protect urban forests and natural areas." And the representative responded very condescendingly with, "You must not work in development." So it is clear to me that trust between developers and neighborhoods has not been achieved. Development is about creating a balance between people and places, and this rezoning interrupts the established aesthetic that has existed for nearly thirty years. The proposals before you today come at a time when construction of the residential neighborhoods along Chalamont Drive are nearing completion, which Potlatch Deltec has planned to ensure the lots were sold and homes were built with this backdrop before deciding to rezone. I again commend you for your service on the Little Rock Planning Commission. I know you once again have a difficult task to make decisions that impact our daily lives of many in the city, but I urge you to again remember, not all change is an improvement. And there are countless commercial properties that are vacant across the city. We do not need commercial density around our neighborhood schools, and doing so will have a negative impact on our community. I, along with my spouse and children, once again, and on behalf of residents of Schuman Court, respectfully urge you, the Commission, and the City of Little Rock to reject this rezoning proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next card here is Melinda Angel, if you're present. Not speaking? Okay, all right. Next card is Leonard Carter. Not speaking, okay. Next card is John Williamson.
Thank you. Appreciate the time. It's a great turnout. I am John Williamson. I'm on the Board of Directors at Eperne. We're actually the second neighborhood coming off of Highway ten onto Chalamont, and I can say our neighbors are not for this. You know, we were presented a master plan when we bought our houses, and it's not fair to us. Now the master plan is changing. You were presented a master plan when you first, when Deltec presented it, you approved that master plan. Now the plan is changing. We've spent millions of dollars moving into this neighborhood for the quiet, peaceful enjoyment to get away from the city. Now, I'm a commercial banker by day. I also have a commercial broker's license, and I'm for economic development growth in our city, but not this far out. That's why we came this far out, to get away from the concrete jungle. So we're not for it. And when you say it's a, it's an access point to this commercial property, for me, that means box trucks, delivery trucks, semi-trucks, commercial vehicles, driving from Chalamont, on Chalamont from Highway ten over to Chenal. So it's just going to, like we just said, it's going to increase the commercial traffic, which already we have some challenges with our street construction in our neighborhoods on the quality of these roads already. So we want to keep being quiet and enjoy our peaceful living out this way, but you know, I am against, when you present a plan, stick to the plan. Let's stick to the plan. And we were presented a plan before we bought our house, and I think it's kind of subtly changing on the Chenals magazine that they just put out. They're advertising this as commercial property for sale now. It had been prior advertised as non-residential, but now they're publicly putting in their magazine, this is commercial property for sale. So I would ask, has there been a backroom door deal done? Why would they come out and say this is commercial property for sale now? So we're not for it. Eperne Place is not for it. So thank you.
Thank you. The next card is Richard M. Pettit, if I'm saying that correctly.
Yeah, I oppose it because I've been there for eighteen.
Could you please come to the podium, please?
That's Richard Pettit, and I oppose to, because it's, we've been there for eighteen years, and same thing, you know, the plan was to have green space and all that when we decided to live in that subdivision, so I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card is Robert Crook.
I'm speaking.
Okay. Next card is Ray Peters.
I'm speaking.
All right. Next card is, is it Lorian Trapani?
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you all again for serving on this Commission. I would just like to reiterate, the fifty homeowners in Corlay Court all are opposed to the rezoning of the area at the end of Chalamont and Cantrell. I agree with everything my neighbors have said. I will add that one of the, that Chalamont is described in one of the plans as a feeder. That street has three cul-de-sacs, I mean, three roundabouts, and we are already as neighbors walking and using the road to traverse between neighborhoods and back and forth to neighbors. There is so much traffic already at high speeds, even with the roundabouts, that if you put commercial at the end of Chalamont where it intersects Cantrell Road, you're going to have even more traffic diverted on Chalamont instead of going Chenal to Cantrell and turning left. It's Google and Google Maps and Waze and Apple Maps are going to send more traffic down those roads without considering the speeds and the roundabouts, and it's going to present a danger to kids riding their bikes on Chalamont and to neighbors walking their dogs. We already have trouble with this small number of commercial trucks that just service the area. Also, as another neighbor said, there is plenty of commercial real estate already available. There's a very unattractive vacated lot at Cantrell and Chenal that is owned, we don't know who owns it, it's not for sale, there's no sign, but it's just a big lot of shells. And it's already, it's already a parking lot, people throw trash there, and it's not maintained by whoever owns it. The other item is that one of the Potlatch gentlemen said that there's over four hundred and eighty acres or of land left for residents that's open space. That's very misleading. In all the neighborhoods, the houses are next door to each other, every lot is full. If there's vacant land for quote recreational use, it's on a hill, or it's some other way that they couldn't put a house there, and that's why it's undeveloped, and so it was convenient for them to, to leave it that way. And thank you very much for your time and for listening to our concerns.
Thank you. Next card we have is Dr. Thomas.
Number one, I'm not a public speaker. Number two, a lot of what's been said, I was planning to say, so I'm not going to reiterate the same things. I started out with four topics, safety, which has been covered, expectations, which I think has been covered, what we were told when we purchased our homes, fairness, I'm going to do that real quick. My husband and I have been living in Little Rock since nineteen ninety. We have paid whatever taxes we were told that we owed. We've never knowingly broken the city laws. We have both worked most of our adult lives, and we're building this home in Corlay Court to be able to enjoy our final years. The quiet nature of the area was exactly what enticed us to commit to move. The last thing is ethics. I've been told that Potlatch is hoping to have financial gains if allowed to change the zoning. I don't know if that's true or not, but I suspect it is. I could also, I also could financially gain if I somehow got away with cheating on taxes, taking packages off of a neighbor's porch, et cetera, but I've never chosen to try that because I was raised hearing the golden rule all my life. I asked Siri, "What are some phrases for doing what's right?" She responded, "Acting in good conscience, acting in good faith, behaving ethically, behaving morally, conducting oneself ethically, conducting oneself morally, doing good and doing right." And I always do this. I said, "Thank you, Siri."
Thank you. Next card is Daniel Miskin.
I'm speaking.
All right.
Representative, did she speak? I'm representing the fellow.
Yes. Excuse me, you did fill out a card, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. It's quite a few of them in here, so I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you for your due diligence. Ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission, thank you again for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Marynell Miskin, and I'm a resident of twenty-two Tournay Circle, along with my husband and our two children. I'm also a design professional at a local landscape architecture and civil engineering firm. I understand, as it greatly affects my profession, the need for growth and development in our city. However, rezoning these particular parcels to neighborhood commercial could have profound and lasting negative impacts on our neighborhood and the surrounding area. I'll try to keep this as short and succinct as possible, but I would like to take this time to outline several key concerns that should be considered before moving forward with this decision. We met with Potlatch Deltec on September twenty-six, as mentioned previously, to discuss our concerns, and while I appreciate their efforts to work with us on this issue, I strongly disagree with their reasoning for developing these two parcels. We asked them point blank why these pieces of land. Their answer was simple, because they have always been marked for development. I don't know about you, but that is not a good enough answer for me. Our neighborhood is located directly adjacent to Joe T. Robinson High School and Elementary School. Tim Daters graciously sent us the two plats for Schuman and Tournay, and these two plats were filed in two thousand four and two thousand nine respectively. Joe T. Robinson High School and Elementary School have been in this area much longer than that. I wonder if it was ever considered during the master planning of this neighborhood, if having two commercial lots here was really the highest and best use for this land, given that it has, has and always will be adjacent to a complete school, knowing the associated safety impacts. The applicant could have extended these two neighborhoods closer to Highway ten, increasing the number of lots in Tournay and Schuman, while still respecting the current zoning and setbacks for Highway ten. That would have been the responsible way to develop these plots of land, given their location. However, that foresight was not taken, and now the residents of our neighborhood must deal with the consequences of this poor planning. My family and our neighbors live in this area because we are far enough away from the city proper to enjoy the peace and serenity that our neighborhood offers while also having convenient access to nearby amenities and services. In the previous Planning Commission meeting, it was stated several times that these parcels are located within a commercial corridor. I would argue that even though Cantrell and Highway ten is classified as a principal arterial on the master street plan, that this portion of Highway ten is not a commercial corridor at all, but is adjacent to a complete school with speed zones of twenty-five miles per hour during pickup and drop-off times. Additionally, the mile west of the intersection of Cantrell and Chenal is nothing but churches, residences, and schools. It is not bustling with businesses as it has been made to seem, and to be honest, we would like it to remain that way for the reason that I stated above. In our September twenty-six meeting, it was requested by residents that a traffic study be commissioned. Because Potlatch Deltec has deferred the last two planning commissions, they have had the time to have this traffic study conducted. And while I appreciate these efforts, this traffic study is skewed and does not reflect the true conditions in front of these two parcels. The report notes that per the City of Little Rock Master Street Plan, Highway ten is a principal arterial, and that the traffic volume is well below the principal arterial service volume. This portion of Highway ten is composed of two drivelines and a turn lane. It has not been updated per Master Street Plan standards to accommodate the traffic volume that is noted in this report, and probably won't be for very many years to come, because these improvements are within Arkansas Department of Transportation jurisdiction. And if you know anything about R dot, you know that it takes them a very long time. All right, so given this, I would just like to state that this report has further created distrust between the residents of this neighborhood and Potlatch Deltec. The P O A president for Tournay Circle could not be with us tonight, but if he were here, he would further speak to this point. In Tournay, there were several lots of green space that sat empty for years. As Potlatch Deltec is nearing the end of developing this neighborhood, they decided to develop these empty lots. They sold the land to a very irresponsible They sold the land to a very irresponsible developer who built rent houses that are essentially falling apart, and that destroyed a large portion of communal green space in front of these houses, and the POA has had to cover these costs because the developer will not. So while Potlatch Deltic has said that they will not sell the land in question today to just anyone, that they will ensure that this development will be up to the standard that is expected in Chenal, this has not been the case in our own neighborhood. Finally, there are numerous lots and shopping centers in Chenal that are currently sitting empty. We must ask ourselves, is it really the best use of our resources to develop these two parcels when lots that have already been cleared for development still sit unused? Again, the answer, "It has already been marked for development," is not sufficient for me. Development for the sake of development, we can have numerous negative impacts, will never be sufficient for me, and I hope that you all feel the same. I urge the Planning Commission to carefully weigh these concerns and consider alternatives that allow for growth while preserving the unique character, quality of life, and environmental health of our community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. All right, uh, moving right along, we have Timothy, uh, Luallan.
Yep. Thanks for letting me talk. Marynell said it very well.
And I will say this, sir, we do have approximately two minutes and eighteen seconds left.
Okay. I've just got a couple of more points that I'd like to make. First is to go back to the green space that they say, I don't know if you can see the map that we're seeing out here, the one that's up on the screen on yours. The green spaces that they said that we're gonna leave the fifty-foot buffer, that's in my original plat and purchase of the property. But then they told us, "Well, if we don't, if we develop this as a residential neighborhood, we're gonna back houses right up to your fence." And I'm like, "Not without going to court first, because that was, is what will happen." That's number one. So they've lied to us about that. Number two, they said, "Well, we can only build a six-foot privacy fence to keep separation between the commercial and the, and the green space." Now they're saying today, an eight-foot privacy fence. It's not good enough, it's better, but it's not good enough. Third thing is, my house is located directly at the bottom of the horseshoe. I face directly into that green space, almost directly to the, uh, to the elementary school. Every morning that the school's in session, there's a sheriff's deputy out there, and this week alone, at least twenty times, he's had to si- sound his siren for people, for some traffic reason. Now, I have no idea what it is, 'cause I can't see through the trees. I don't know if there's people speeding, people turning when there shouldn't be, I don't know. The point is, there's a traffic issue both during, uh, school start and school end, and it also happens down at the high school end as well. And I hear it every day, 'cause fortunately, I'm retired. I have my windows open to get fresh air, and I can hear that every day. It's multiple times a day. So there's a lot of traffic. So I have no clue what the traffic study said, because apparently, I, you know, some people got it, I didn't. But the point is, whatever traffic study you've got, probably did not take into consideration the actual, uh, traffic that comes down through there. And on the weekends, just to give you a mild example, on the weekends, when I sit out on my back porch, if it's, if it's once, it's every other weekend, there are cars speeding up and down that highway, and there's gangs, not gangs, that's a wrong word, clubs of motorcycles going up and down that highway, all loud, all barreling down through there, a whole lot faster than I know the speed allows. So that's, those are things to take into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, well, uh, time has elapsed on us, uh, it's been over. We do have several different cards left, uh, and I would just say, for the record, if your name, if you're in here, your name was on here, uh, but not, was not called, feel free to raise your hand, or you can stand just to make sure your presence was here. For the record, it will be, uh, you know, all the cards will be taken up and will be here. So we do have, just for a show of hands, okay.
Any questions?
No, I'm saying, if I did not call your name, and you actually signed a card to speak, or not to speak, uh, if, if your name was not called, just raise your hand. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, one, sir, just, just a point of information, once the applicant presents their case, if the commission deems fit to extend more time, we can, correct?
Of course. If you have a question for a particular, uh, uh, applicant, or if someone in opposition, uh, yes, you can ask them a question.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, so with that being said, I wanna bring the applicants, uh, or the applicants back up here, and, uh, feel free to address any of the concerns, uh, from the neighbors. At this particular time, the floor is yours, your attorney's body.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me, let me just say, to begin with, that irrespective of what anyone has said, Potlatch Deltic takes the concerns of the neighborhood very seriously. And despite the murmurs and giggles behind me, the reality is this: we ask for your indulgence to let us meet with the neighborhood, and we did. And we did listen, and we have made a number of adjustments and concessions, because we firmly believe that this is the highest and best use of the subject property. It's not to mean that we take their concerns lightly. However, let me make a few points. There's been a lot said about green space and buffer. Let's be clear, at no time has a subject property ever been shown on any map of Chenal property, Chenal Valley, as a green space, a green belt, or a buffer, ever. It has always been shown for future development. In fact, when the preliminary plat for these neighborhoods was submitted to the city in nineteen ninety-eight, not the final plats, the preliminary plat in nineteen ninety-eight, the subject two tracks on Highway ten were explicitly shown for future development. Not green space, but for future development. It's simply and purposely inaccurate to describe this property as green belt or green space. We can understand that the residents may consider and have even assumed that the property might never be developed, but that is wholly unfair to our client, and we ask that you acknowledge that these are misstatements of fact. In addition, the neighborhoods have ignored the existence of extensive green spaces, as Mr. Daters pointed out earlier. Thirty-two percent of the areas shown on the map in front of you was dedicated green space from day one. It's also somewhat ironic that further careful examination of the lots in these neighborhoods will reveal that trees purposely left by Potlatch Deltic have subsequently been removed from certain lots, not saying the owners did it, maybe the builder built it, we don't know. Lots that border the proposed buffer area perhaps by builders or owners, but not by the applicant. So there are fewer trees on these lots than there were when the lots were sold. Traffic and safety. First, there's absolutely nothing inherently dangerous about the intersection of Chalamont Drive or Highway ten, at Highway ten. The city's planning staff, the sit, there is nothing inherently dangerous about the design of this intersection. The city's planning staff would not allow this matter to come before you with either a misaligned or inherently designed, dangerous design. Second, we can all acknowledge, and we acknowledge, that traffic on Highway ten is and has been a problem for quite some time. As the surrounding area has developed, traffic has increased. This phenomenon is not unique to this neighborhood or to West Little Rock. This is especially true at peak hours at the beginning and at the end of the school day. However, it's misleading to assume that the development of this property for neighborhood commercial purposes will materially worsen the existing traffic congestion. Among the supplemental information provided to you and Potlatch Deltic commissioned this study at the request of the neighbors is a traffic study prepared by Peterson Associates, who has prepared traffic studies and submitted them for consideration by this commission literally for decades. Now, because the outcome of that study didn't support what the neighbors wanted, they now questioned the integrity of the report, or the validity of the report. If you look at the report, you will find that over a two-day period, the longest queue on Chalamont at any time was five cars. You will find that the times when there was congestion, either on Chalamont, which is a collector's street, or on Highway ten, was limited to less than a half an hour. The rest of the time, traffic flowed evenly. It's not to say there's not a lot of traffic, not trying to skew this and say that this is a country road, it's not, it's a state highway. But the reality is that except for those peak hours in the morning, and for a lesser time in the afternoon, there aren't significant queues on either of these streets. Now, I, I would, I would also say that although some question has been made as to the validity of the current classification of Cantrell Highway ten as an arterial and Chalamont as a collector, the traffic volumes on Highway ten and Chalamont are significantly less than that allowed on a principal arterial or collector's street. In fact, they're barely half what's allowed under the city's current master street plan. All interested parties in the county, the city, Blas County School District should be working to, together to develop solutions to the traffic challenges, but no ultimate solution can be reached until all of the nearby property has been fully developed. There's been something said about incompatible uses. As we've already demonstrated, Potlatch Deltic has been open and willing to restrict allowable uses to which the property may be developed, devoted at the request of the neighborhoods. That has not satisfied the neighborhoods, we understand that. It's simply untrue, and again, misleading, as one person said in an earlier meeting, to say that the uses will be, that will be permitted will not, quote, "improve the community." It was also stated by a resident that this is the only residential neighborhood in Chenal Valley that backs up to and adjoins commercial property. This is patently untrue. We've identified at least seven other neighborhoods, and there are other property owners up and down Highway ten whose property backs up directly to residential neighborhoods, including some other Chenal neighborhoods. Questions been made about loss of privacy, privacy and security. Much has been made in correspondence about that. Been suggested that with the clearance of the subject property, there will be undesirable noise pollution and undesirable closed pedestrian access through the buffer zone to homeowners' backyards and homes. Once again, Potlatch Deltic has offered meaningful responses to these concerns. We also might interrate that the choice of neighborhood commercial for the development of the subject property was not made randomly, but with an eye to what uses would result in the most appropriate blending and transition of residential, non-resident, residential uses, which has been one of the key elements of the Highway ten plan for thirty or forty There was also something said very eloquently, I might say, about the misalignment with the city Little Rock Future Land Use Plan. That this plan goes against each of the principles outlined in the City of Little Rock Future Land Use Plan, and further suggests it's inconsistent with the vaunted, vaunted Highway ten plan. This has been the cornerstone of development of the Highway ten corridor for decades. This is absolutely untrue. The application before you complies in every particular with the Highway ten plan, and you know that your staff would never have allowed it to come before you today if it did not. The city's Future Land Use Plan and Highway ten plan have always contemplated a carefully designed mixture of various uses, and the plan before you today has been formulated and presented exactly with those principles in mind. In conclusion, the proposal before you today has been carefully formulated to meet and comply with all relevant zoning and development standards for the city of Little Rock, and in particular, the Highway ten corridor. It represents the best, highest, and most appropriate use of the subject property in concert with the existing uses and future possible uses. And on behalf of the applicant, Potlatch Deltic Real Estate, we respectfully ask for this commission's approval of this application. We're happy to answer any questions you may have at this time. Thank you very much.
I think, Bill, one thing that I would add.
Excuse me.
No, go ahead, Tim.
We don't represent it very well on this map.
Into the microphone. Tim, could you, uh, thank you.
Bill takes up a lot of the podium. Uh, one thing that we did not do a good job representing on this map are the land uses and current plans for the property, which is across Highway ten from these two tracks. If you look at the drawing in front of you on the left-hand side north of Highway ten, there's a fire station site at Morgan Cemetery Road. There's a self-storage area in the large tract, uh, just to the east of it. Then as you continue to move to the east across from Chalamont, when you come out of Chalamont, there's an existing non-conforming use, which is an auto repair facility. Uh, next to that, there's a conditional use office tract, and then in the corner, there's a, uh, newly constructed service company, which is a, uh, service organization who wanted to be there because of the visibility on Highway ten. But, but we're not across from a residential subdivision. And when we first developed the plan for, uh, Chalamont in, uh, the late nineteen nineties, uh, we originally had Chalamont as a straight-through collector's street from one end to the other. Uh, we realized that we were about to build a six- or seven-thousand-foot-long street without interruption, so we came back and looked at the key locations where we could build traffic circles. We built one at Duquesne with the initial construction, we built another one at the park, and then we built another one at Epernay, where, which was the first subdivision that we did in this area. Uh, we stopped the residential subdivisions about three hundred feet from Highway ten and showed that area's future development on our preliminary platform back in the late nineties. We did that because we didn't think at that point in time that it was appropriate to run residential development all the way up to Highway ten. We were looking ahead to the point when there would be some other development, and we labeled that as future development, and it's shown on the Chenal Valley Land Use Plan as, uh, non-residential, uh, from the early, uh, probably two thousand on. Uh, we, I think that this is an appropriate transitional use. We are leaving a buffer which does not exist today, uh, and, uh, and if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you. All right, it, uh, it's, uh, excuse me, at this particular time, since we are hearing item two LU two zero two four dash nineteen dash zero one and two-point-one Z dash one zero zero three six, we will open the floor to the commissioners for any particular questions, um, that you have at this time. So the floor is open. Commissioner Brown, go ahead.
Yeah, this is to the applicant. Um, a couple of things. You've mentioned several times about this always being planned for future development in the Chenal Valley Plan. I guess something that's not taken in time for me, and again, I'm not a development guy, I'm just a, you know, dumb old PhD psychologist, so maybe there's something I'm missing. Um, when I look on the City of Little Rock's land use plan, it shows this as residential low density. But what's this other Chenal Valley plan you keep speaking of? Because my understanding is the plan of record is what the City of Little Rock has on file.
That's, that's correct. Chenal Properties has maintained a Chenal development plan that shows, uh, residential and non-residential properties. For years, they've broken it into those two groups.
Right.
And, and that was for their own internal plan and for, and for marketing.
Okay.
The, the, it, it, it's, it's typically consistent with the city plan, but in this particular case, when this property was annexed to the city, it came in as R2, and it did not come in as a higher zoning.
Okay, so basically, this is not the city's plan, this is you as a developer's?
That's correct.
Okay.
Let me, let me say something, though. So, understand, and I think you probably know this, because I know you've been on the commission for a while, anytime property's annexed in and hasn't been previously the subject of the zoning, it comes in as R2 property. It doesn't come in as commercial property, doesn't come in as anything else. And the city has a land use plan, and part of what we're doing today is asking you to consider changing that, because it's necessary to move from R2 to something else. But on the Chenal plan, and in particular, the plan that's used to market property, this has always been shown for future development. It's never been shown on the commercial development website, which is a separate website, as commercial property. It's been shown for future development.
Right, but, but what you're telling me is this isn't the city's plan, this is your plan. So that's, right, I understand, okay.
But it's a plan which has evolved over the past thirty years.
I, I understand that. And speaking of evolving over the next thirty years, here's where I've got a big concern about this, and I'm gonna speak, full disclosure, as someone who, you talk about the families whose properties back up to commercial property and things got changed and want to, I was recently one of those victims, all right? So I've got a soft spot for all the folks out here who are opposing this, and normally I don't let that sway my decision, but you're gonna have to sell me here. You're saying that this is a commercial corridor, but I drive down there pretty regular. There's nothing commercial down there. Now, there is pro- commercial property moving westward, but it's nowhere near there. And what I'm concerned about, and I want you, I'm, I'm one of the lis- And what I'm concerned about, and I'm one of the listeners to be swayed here, is if we go along with this, that puts everybody all the way from there, all the way up to Highway 10, know they can start saying, well, there's commercial here, commercial there, and really impact a whole lot of homeowners, not just these folks. So help me out here with why I shouldn't worry about that as a commissioner and a citizen.
I don't think we're going to tell you you shouldn't worry about it as commissioner. We would hope that as a member of the commission, you'd worry about any matter that came before you, just as you've articulated to us right now. However, what we've done is to look at, and Tim went over these recently, just a few minutes ago, the existing uses that are already there. I don't, I've never used the term "commercial corridor" in any presentation I've made before this commission. What we've said is that neighborhood commercial is an appropriate and consistent use at this location in view of everything else that's already there. Now, it may be splitting hairs, but the point is this. We're asking you to consider a use which, if done in a planned way, which is what the plan that's been presented to you contemplates, would be an appropriate transition to the residential areas behind it. Now, I don't, and I appreciate your candor. Thank you for telling us what your own experience has been. I'm sorry that you were a victim. I'm sorry that we use that term here because we don't think anyone's a victim. What we think-
Go ahead, Bill.
Mr. Chairman, I can't compete with the audience. So, my point is simply, I hear what you're saying. And we think that at this location, this is a better use than perhaps an alternative.
Okay, last question, then I'll get off my soapbox. If I understand this correctly, you do not know what's going in there yet. You're asking for us to approve a plan to change property. And again, let's be clear. If it was R2, we'd be like, yeah, go ahead, because that's what the plan says. You're asking us to let you upzone this to C1, which is several jumps. Not knowing what is going to go in there yet, aside from those uses that you've explicitly denied in the most recent application. You don't know who you're going to sell it to, you know what's actually going in there. We don't know that yet. Is that accurate?
That's correct. This is, let me be clear, and we're clear at an earlier meeting. This is not driven because we've got a contract with somebody out there who's going to buy it if we get it rezoned. But this is not unique. We have sought the approval of this commission many, many times for appropriate changes, some of which have never developed in accordance with the way they were zoned. If you're familiar with Rowling Road from Pebble Beach South, that area in there was rezoned, I don't know, ten years ago, twelve years ago. And there's C1 right there, and to this day, it has not developed. But at the time, we felt that that was the appropriate time to go ahead and ask the city to designate what uses would be permitted there. The entire track that was rezoned at that time, the only thing that's gone in is a fifty-five and older housing development up on a ridge there. And it was originally scheduled to be developed for apartments. The apartments didn't happen, but the residential, the elderly residential development did. So it is not unusual for Potlatch Deltec to seek approval in advance of demand or in advance of someone saying, "I'll buy it if you get it rezoned." Tim?
On the west side, on the east side of Joe T, we had a tract that was approximately-
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Tim. Can you speak into the microphone so we all can hear?
Thank you, Chairman, I'm sorry. On the east side of Joe T, Potlatch Deltec had a tract that was approximately eight or ten acres that was zoned commercial. We looked at that tract as we were developing parts of this platte and realized that we did not want a commercial tract there that big. So we actually reduced the size of the commercial tract on the east side of Joe T and increased the area of residential development. So we do make changes in our anticipated plan to adjust for like the demand for residential or the demand for commercial. But we've never really pushed residential development all the way out to Highway 10.
There was none of these existing neighborhoods.
No, we've typically left, we've tried, there's one spot in Bronte, which we were relatively close, but typically we've got commercial uses along Highway 10. But you're correct, this would be a change, and that's why we sought staff's input and their comment before we presented it to you.
All right. Commissioner Russell, go ahead.
I'm just going to make a brief statement for the benefit of the commission, the benefit of the audience, and hopefully the benefit of the applicant. The C1 Neighborhood Commercial District is not several jumps from a residential. It is designed specifically for servicing neighborhoods. To read from the ordinance, the C1 Neighborhood Commercial District is designed to accommodate limited retail developments within or adjacent to neighborhood areas for the purpose of supplying daily household needs of the residents for food, drugs, and personal services. This section applies to such district. Commercial uses within this district should not depend on market areas larger than the neighborhood served. The district may also be used in conjunction with existing commercial developments as an extension of such established commercial district, which the applicant has described as across Cantrell to the north. Some of the uses are bakeries, banks, barber shops, bookstores. The district regulations do not allow buildings to be built larger than what would be built as a single-family residence. A height limit of thirty-five feet, a front yard setback of twenty-five feet, a side yard setback, while not required, is generally limited to ten percent of the lot width. The rear yard also twenty-five feet, similar to most residential neighborhoods. This is a compatible development in an area like this, which is why the applicant is requesting the C1 Neighborhood Commercial Zone.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bobo, go ahead.
I want to thank Commissioner Russell for reading that. That's what I was reviewing while I was looking down at my phone, was the C1 ordinance. I think also something that I looked at and started doing the math on is, it's already R2. And if R2 is allowed to develop, which Potlatch Deltec is a for-profit company, publicly traded, they have a duty, a fiduciary duty to maximize profitability. So I did a quick, just quick math. Six thousand square feet is what you need to build a house in R2. On six acres, times forty-three, five sixty, you can do almost forty-five houses on the western part of this. So I guess that's my question for the applicant is, if we don't give y'all the opportunity to go to C2, what might be the course of action that y'all take with R2? Is it going to be a development of residence?
It will not be green space. I don't mean that jokingly. It will be developed. If left without an alternative, and we've been very careful about doing this because we didn't want this to be perceived as a threat, yes, it can be developed as a single-family neighborhood.
And again, we're asking for C1 and obviously two. But part of the, part of the dynamic here is that this is not going to develop as a C1 use in the next year, two years, three years. In other words, this is a, well, I think we've got a longer horizon that we're looking at for development. If this zoning's not approved and during that horizon it becomes the place where, you know, people want to build a certain type of housing, then this may well move into a residential development in that interim. But we really think that the highest and best use of this and the best way to buffer the neighborhood by putting a buffer between this and the neighborhood is to pursue this C1 land use.
Let me answer. Let's be direct and ask you a question. Yes, we would look at the multiple number of lots which would be developed in this area. It would probably be as many as, but not guaranteed, seventy-five single-family lots. There would be no fifty-foot buffer because residential to residential doesn't require one. Those lots would back up to the backyards of these existing houses. And therefore, if that's the use that we end up with, that's certainly an alternative. We believe strongly that the neighborhood commercial presents a better alternative and a better transition than that, but as you say, it's R2. It is what it is.
May I follow up?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, I've had houses under construction next to me for about fifteen years, a long time. And sometimes I think on this commission, which I've sat here for six years, missed very few meetings, and I apologize for missing last month. But, you know, part of the calculus here is even though the residents may not like what is proposed right now, I think our job as commissioners is to look forward, plan, and hopefully make a wise decision that gives y'all, the residents, the best opportunity for, you know, minimal disruption. And I for one see this as a very valid ask, and will be in favor of this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions or statements from any other commissioners?
Yeah, I'd like to ask the applicant one question. Mr. Spivey, to the extent that you can speak on behalf of your client, why is your client pushing so hard to rezone this tract when there is and has been such vocal opposition? Is it just about maximizing profit? I mean, is it about betterment of the community? Because I just think if I were a developer, obviously these people, if I owned this land and they bought land from me and they built houses on my land, and it sounds like they at least had some expectation that this would remain green space. What's the push? Why is it pushing so hard?
Well, I'm glad you phrased the question the way you did because I don't sit in on the board meetings. I don't have any access to what. But I can tell you this. Some of you know this. I've appeared before this commission for over thirty years on behalf of Potlatch Deltec. It's not the first time we've asked to change a use because the use and the plan evolved. And we're not down here, I mean, we filed an application. You know, I'm not beating my fist on the deal. We'll take a vote today and we'll see where it goes. But the point is this. We believe, and if we didn't believe, and if Potlatch Deltec didn't believe, and if Tim didn't believe that this was the best use at that location, we'd have come in and asked for something else. That's the only way to answer your question.
If we can develop this as a non-residential use, we can leave a buffer behind the existing subdivision. If we're going to develop it as a residential use, the buffer will be out on Highway 10. There will not be a buffer between the two subdivisions. Their back of their lots will be the back of other lots. There are no platted or restricted buffers in existence today. And we think that they would, that, well, I drew the plats. I recorded the plats. Okay, I'm sorry. But I think if we didn't think this was a better way to do it, we certainly wouldn't be standing here going through this. Sorry.
I just have one thing to say.
You had mentioned the development, the C1 development that's near a senior living center. You had mentioned a C1 development that's in Chenal-
Yes.
Near the senior living.
There is, yes.
And I've driven by that, and it's basically nothing there. I think maybe what you were saying does not really paint a picture. Basically, if you were to change, if it was voted that this would be changed to C1, the likelihood of this turning into what you see when you drive by that location, I just don't understand how that will help the neighborhood just having a vacant, empty lot if it doesn't become developed just like that one.
That's part of the, one of the things that we offer the neighborhood is we said we would not clear any of these lots until we had a buyer who was going to build a structure. Along Rowling Road, because of the terrain and topography, we necessarily had to do that. But on this particular case, there'll be trees there until somebody buys a lot and gets a development plan approved.
Okay.
May I?
You were just saying that it will be developed, so I was just wondering, you know, what it would look like. Would it sit vacant, looking like that for years or? So thank you, you answered my question.
If you refer to the conditions that are at the back of your write-up from the staff, it will tell you that it won't be cleared immediately until it's ready for development. And one other aspect of Rowling Road, I'm glad you brought that up. When Rowling Road was developed, it was a very low place there. In order to build Rowling Road, it was necessary to add fill. All of that fill came off the adjacent property. And that was due in large part to the city's excavation ordinances, which require that if you bring it in, you got to have a place to put it, or if you take it out, you got to take it someplace else. And that was part of the agreement with the city that that would be cleared and excavated in order to provide the foundation for Rowling Road. So that's why that area is cleared.
You brought it up as an example, so I'm just-
I did, I did, and I appreciate it because I'd forgotten that until you mentioned it. But I agree with you. It's cleared. All of the area that you see down below is C1. There is an office area slightly to the back, and then there are residential areas behind that.
I know.
You do. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from, or statements from any other commissioners?
Yeah, I have one other set of questions. This is for the, for the neighbors, for those who spoke in opposition. I think it was mentioned by Mr. Williams and Mr. Petit that there was this original master plan that basically said that this was going to be kept green space. Do any of you have a copy of that? Because I'm just curious, Mr. Spivey, Mr. Daters, perhaps you could speak to this. Was there some sort of being held out to these buyers that this would remain green space?
No, on Potlatch Deltec's sales plan, there's different shadings on that plan. The open spaces are all shaded light green. This area has been shaded dark red since about, the latest copy I could find was two thousand and six.
This month, it's blue though. It's changed this month.
Yeah, but it's always, it's never, it's never been light green. But, and there are significant areas of Chenal Valley that are going to be permanent green space and set aside.
Can I ask a question?
Well, if we take one question, then we may have to take all questions. But for the sake of Commissioner Baxter-
His question, or his question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And maybe you can tell me, I may have a severe misunderstanding, but when I purchased my property, the closing documents that I got showed that light green space to be left in reserve. That is supposed to be green space. I don't know, I don't remember about the other bigger space, but I do know that. And we've heard that man say twice today that if it becomes residential, they're going to back them up to my property, which means my documents or what I paid for show that green space. They're not backing up to my property. They can't take that. That, my documents, since I paid for them, you tell me if I'm wrong, but if, since when I paid for it, that's my closing documents, it shows that green space in there, that fifty-foot or I'll say twenty-five to be generous, but twenty-five or fifty-foot wide path through there between our neighborhoods and that other space.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? Statements, questions from any other commissioners? Before we vote, so we're going to vote on two separate items here. It's going to be item number two is the first one, and then two point one for the second one. So I would, we're going to vote separately. So I would entertain a motion for item number two first.
I'll make a motion to approve item number two LU two zero two four dash one nine dash zero one, land use plan amendment with all staff's recommendations and conditions in the agenda staff report.
Second. We have a motion in the second. Can I get a roll call for voting, please? Yes, sir. Brown?
No.
Hart? Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
No.
Person?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Baxter?
No.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion to approve, six votes. Now we will move along to item two point one.
Make a motion to approve item two point one- Make a motion to approve item two point one, Z dash one zero zero three six, rezoning from R two to C one with all staff's recommendations and conditions in the agenda staff report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Can I get a roll call for voting, please? Brown?
No.
Hart? Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
No.
Person?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Baxter?
No.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion's approved. All right. Motion's approved. Thank you very much for coming out, uh, for this item here. And we will move to the, right along to the second item. And that's item number one. Yeah, we would give just a quick, we'll, we'll give just a quick minute for everybody to clear out here. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to do, uh, item number one. And if the applicant is present, please make your way to the podium. It's item number one, Z dash one zero zero two four. All right, and while the applicant is coming, uh, Monty, can you do a summary, a reading, please?
Item number one, file number Z ten thousand twenty-four. This is the Vargas Body Shop PDC located eighty-four fifteen Scott Hamilton Drive. The applicant is requesting to rezone this five and a half acre tract from R two to PDC to recognize the current and existing use of the property, which is operating as a bot, an auto body repair shop and additional commercial uses that have, have been operating on the property since nineteen sixty-five. The applicant is not requesting any changes to the property. All buildings, parking, and driveways will remain the same. The property is located on the east side of Scott Hamilton Drive, west of Jameson Road. The existing one-story, eighty-six hundred and ten square foot building is located in the western portion of the property, approximately sixty feet from Scott Hamilton Drive. The site contains asphalt parking that wraps around most of the building. The remaining western portion of the property uh, behind the building is undeveloped. Properties in the general area contain a mixture of zoning and uses. Uh, access is provided by a concrete driveway along Scott Hamilton, near the southwest corner of the property. The site contains asphalt park, paving again that wraps around most of the building and utilized for employee and customer parking. There's additional parking located at the rear of the building. Staff feels the existing parking is sufficient to serve the current and existing uses. Uh, the staff is supportive of the PDC zoning. Staff feels the request is reasonable. The property has been used and operated in the same manner as it has been for several decades. Staff supports allowing C four permitted uses as alternate or future uses for this existing developed property. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDC subject to compliance with comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Vargas, uh, we have one, uh, card in opposition. If you would like to, uh, let them speak first and defer your time and then come back after as you can, or the floor is yours, whichever you prefer. All right. So we only have one card, and that card is Robert Dedman. If you're, if you're here. Robert Dedman is Henry and Walter Dedman that had on the card in parentheses here. If you're not, if, I guess if you left in, we're going to have Mr. Vargas to come back up. All right. If you'd like to make any statements, the floor is yours. Uh, if not, uh, we can come back to the commissioners and answer any questions and make a voting.
Uh, my name is Harold Schmeckenbecker. I'm the trustee of Walter Harold Schmeckenbecker Senior Trust, who owns the property. We are renting out to Vargas. Uh, the, my dad had put this thing in in nineteen sixty-five as a, where he could repair his equipment, uh, and also as a business operation. Uh, it's, when he retired, he rented it out to Brad Reagan, uh, uh, actually Carolina Tire Division of Brad Reagan, which rented the property for about ten or twelve years. I'm not sure. Didn't keep up with it. I had my own things then. Uh, then it was triple A forklift, uh, for about ten, fifteen years. They repaired and sold forklifts and things of that nature. Uh, after they went bankrupt, it was rented out to one filter company and then another filter company. It's been in, uh, use as one type of, uh, entity or another since then. Uh, for whatever reason, it, when it was built, it was not in the city. When the city annexed the area, for whatever reason, they put this commercial property as residential. I don't understand that, but that's the way they do. Um, but anyway, it's always been a commercial property uh, since sixty-two or sixty-five. I'm not sure exactly of the date, but, uh, sixty-five for sure because that's the, uh, when they put their, the sidewalk in, that's the date they put in the sidewalk.
All right, thank you. All right. Well, since there is not any opposition, and this was actually on a consent agenda pulled from the opposition, uh, if no commissioner has any questions, um, I would like to make a, I would like to entertain a motion, uh, for this item.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve item number one, file number Z dash one zero zero two four, as submitted with all staff's recommendations and conditions in the agenda staff report.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please? Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Hart? Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Motion approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move, uh, right along because we do have a commissioner that has to leave at six. So I want to make certain that we can, you know, uh, have all commissioners on board as, as much as possible. So we're going to move right along to item number twelve that was pulled. And we only have one card in opposition for that. Item number twelve, S dash one nine eight one, is the applicant present? Please make your way to the podium, and we have the reading.
Uh, file, uh, item number twelve, file number S nineteen eighty-one, Rodriguez Replat, eleven thousand one twelve West Baseline Road. The applicant requests to subdivide or replat this zero point nine acre property into three lots to allow for construction of two additional single-family residences. The property is located on the west side of Lindley Drive, north of Baseline Road. There is a one-story single-family residence located near the center of the property on the proposed lot two. The remainder of the property is undeveloped. The applicant proposes to split, uh, this property into three lots, each being approximately, uh, three tenths of an acre in size. Section thirty-six two fifty-four D four of the city's zoning ordinance requires a minimum lot depth of a hundred feet. The proposed lots will be ninety-five feet deep as the existing overall property has an existing depth of ninety-five feet. The applicant is requesting a variance from this ordinance requirement. Staff is supportive of that. Section thirty-six two fifty-four D two requires minimum side setbacks of eight feet for R two zone lots. The applicant is requesting a variance from this ordinance standard to allow five-foot minimum side yards. Uh, staff also supports that. Staff is supportive of the requested replat, and staff recommends approval of the requested replat subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
Thank you, applicant. Could you please state your name for the record?
Nick Tucker with Tucker Land Surveying. I'm the authorized agent for the client.
All right, uh, all right, Mr. Tucker, you only have one card in opposition. Would you like to speak first or let opposition defer your time?
Sorry.
All right. So we only have one card here, and that is Mr. Troy Leahy. Would you like to come up here to the podium, sir? The clock is ticking. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. It doesn't start till you get here.
I may be old and slow, but I'm here. Anyway, my name is Troy Leahy. I'm vice president of Southwest Little Rock United for Progress. And on our meeting here last Monday night, we had invited this client to come and make a presentation of what he proposed to do. He did not show up. We don't have any idea what he was going to do. His neighbors, I don't think, have any idea what he was going to do because he never showed any plans. Therefore, as our policy is, if nobody shows up and nobody tells us what the plan on doing, they're really not interested in redeveloping this property. And that's the way we look at it. If he don't show up, he don't come and tell us what to do, what they're planning to do, they're not interested. So I'm going to ask that you disapprove this proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Leahy, if you'd like to sit right here, there's plenty of open seats right there. You don't, so you won't have to go back through there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right. So, uh, applicant, if you will, Mr. Tucker, you can come back up here. If, if you'd like to make any statements, uh, the floor is yours at this time.
Uh, uh, thank you for your time, uh, commissioners. Uh, Mr. Leahy, uh, very sorry about not being able to make your meeting, uh, on Monday night at six o'clock. I had a prior obligation. Uh, but the owner is simply trying to subdivide a single parcel into three single lots for an additional construction of two single-family homes. Uh, the woman who is, who currently owns the property, she's not a general contractor. She's just interested in, in getting the most out of her property. So that's it.
All right. Uh, do, I want to open the floor up to any commissioners with any questions or statements? And if not, uh, we'd love to entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve item number twelve, file number S one nine eight one, uh, as submitted with all staff's recommendations and conditions in the agenda staff report.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second and roll call vote, please. Yes, sir. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Hart? Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Thank you very much, sir. All right. Let's move right along to item number thirteen, S dash one nine eight two, uh, for the former lot split. If the applicant is present, please make your way to the podium. And, uh, if I can have the, since this was, uh, from the consent agenda, and you can give an abbreviated, uh, summary, if you will, on this one here, while the applicant, uh, makes their way to the.
Okay. Uh, item number thirteen, S nineteen eighty-two, farmer lot split, ninety-five twelve Johnson Ranch, or Johnson Road. Uh, this is simply, uh, request to subdivide five acres of property into two lots. Uh, there's an existing house on one of the two lots. The second lot is proposed to allow the daughter of the homeowner to build a home on the second lot, and staff does recommend approval of that, su- uh, subject to the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
All right. Uh, could you please state your name for the record?
Felicia Tatum.
All right, Ms. Tatum. Uh, we only have one card in opposition. Would you like to go forth, or would you like to defer your time and let opposition come up and then you come back up to the podium?
I'll defer my time.
All right. So we have one card, Mr. Troy Leahy, if you will, uh, approach the podium. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. My name is Troy Leahy, and I'm vice president of Southwest Little Rock United for Progress. These people ignore any requests to come and explain what they're planning on doing, and the neighbors don't know what they're planning on doing out there. And, uh, we feel like we should know if it's going in our neighborhood, that we ought to know what's going to happen out there. And not saying that these people won't do it, but my experience in the past is, no, don't go there. Okay. I got waved off on that comment, so. But we are opposed to it, and that's, that's the rea- reason why. And let me sit down and shut up before y'all get mad.
No, that's okay. Thank you, lady. Mrs. Tatum, Ms. Tatum, would you please come back up to the podium? Thank you. All right. Well, if you have any statements or, or comments, the floor is yours at a particular time. If not, then you, uh, turn it back over to commissioners and we can move forward.
Okay, no, nothing, um, uh, other than I respect his position. I wasn't aware of the meeting that I needed to attend. Uh, but I just simply want to request a replat lot split so I can be near my aging mother, uh, so I can take care of her immediate needs. Also, I want to note that the developer is, um, Songbird Development, which is not only my contractor, but he is also a fellow neighbor, uh, in the area where I'm trying to build.
All right. Thank you. At this particular time, I want to open the floor up to any commissioners with any questions or comments or statements. And if not, I'd love to entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve, uh, item thirteen, file number S one nine eight two, uh, as submitted with all staff's recommendations and conditions in the agenda staff report.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. May I get a roll call vote, please? Yes, sir. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Hart? Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for coming out. Okay, what I'm trying to do is because we have a commissioner that has to leave at six P M., I'm trying to get as many as we can, um, uh, have heard. So I want to move forward and accordingly, uh, to item number fourteen, Z dash one zero zero six zero. If the applicant is present, um, please make your way to the podium. And that's F R T group home. And I believe, um, is the applicant present? The applicant was present, but, um, I no longer see him. If you allow, um, us to go out and see if he's in the hall. He was here against the real wall with, uh, with someone else, but he's, he's no longer here. Uh, Terrell, hadn't it Terrell Newton, something to that effect? Yes. All right, we will. All right. So we're going to give here just a minute, just to check and make sure the applicant, uh, is still on the premises or if they left the building. And Cameron, while we're doing that, would you like to make it, uh, make an address for the record?
Yeah, and, and just, just so I know, how many cards in opposition do we have?
Three.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to make sure it was, it was more than a couple, um, just in the interest of time. Um, because I know that the commissioners have heard me, uh, do my little bit on this a few times, but, um, just because we are about to move into, uh, a portion here where we're talking about a group home, uh, we have a statement, uh, from the city attorney's office. We read here just to make sure, um, that we keep everything, uh, i- in a relevant space, uh, as far as, uh, the discussion of this is, is concerned. So, um, you know, a- any discussion or comments which concern disability status or a particular disability, whether that's physical m- uh, disability, mental disability, or substance use disorder, aren't relevant to the discussion of this item. Uh, commissioners should note that no decisions on this item should be made, uh, based on a disability status or a particular disability, and doing so would violate the Fair Housing Act. Uh, the city of Little Rock provides that consideration, discussion, and comment on this item can address space in the existing, uh, similar facilities, existing zoning and land use patterns, the maximum number of individuals on the application, the need and provision for readily available public or quasi-public transit, access by residents to support services, and availability of adequate parking. Individual tenants who pose a direct threat to the health, safety, uh, health and safety of other individuals or pose a direct threat or of substantial. Individual tenants who pose a direct threat to the health, safety, uh, health and safety of other individuals or pose a direct threat or of substantial damage to property of others are not allowed in such a home. It should be noted that these direct threats must not be merely perceived or theoretical, they must be, uh, individualized, th- this must be an individualized determination based on reliable and objective evidence. The city of Little Rock provides for presumption, uh, of approval for any applicant which meets the other requirements of the special use permit ordinance and is housing eight or fewer disabled persons such as this application. It is the advice of the Little Rock City Attorney's Office, the commission does not have the discretion to deny an application that meets the ordinance requirements with eight or fewer residents.
Cameron, thank you very much, okay, the applicant for item number fourteen is not present, I presume, uh, obviously they left, so, uh, at this particular time, uh, we're just going to have to defer, are they going to have to take a deferral?
Yep, I'll make a motion.
Up on their expense, so we can.
I'll make a motion to defer item number fourteen due to the applicant not being present, Z dash one zero zero six zero.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, can we get a?
I have a question, that's that the, uh, petitioner's experience correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Correct. Thank you, Commissioner. Torres, roll call please.
Second.
Yes. Just waiting on a second, I'm sorry. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Hart? Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
The motion's been approved to defer the item to the December twelfth agenda.
Alright, let's move right along to item number twenty-six, Z dash one one seven three. Uh, if the applicant is present, uh, please make your way to the podium. And this was on the consent agenda here? Is this twenty-six, item number twenty-six?
Yes.
Uh, Icon, Icon Homes? Okay, alright. Yeah, alright, so, uh, Monty, could you please, uh, do a brief, because this is on the consent agenda, a brief summarization?
Item twenty-six, Z ten thousand seventy-three, Icon Homes LLC, P D R, four fourteen North Spruce Street. The applicant proposes to rezone this property from R three to P D R for a single-family residential development. The lot is currently, uh, sixty-six and two-thirds by a hundred and forty feet in area and, uh, the, uh, applicant proposes to subdivide that into two lots, each being thirty-three and a third by one forty for the construction of a single-family home on each of the two lots. There'll be, uh, driveways from the alley for each residence and parking for each residence. Um, the, the exterior of the residences will be vinyl siding with one foot six inch layer of brick at the base with asphalt shingles. Uh, to staff's knowledge, there are no outstanding issues and staff does support the application and recommends approval of the P D R zoning subject to compliance with comments and conditions outlined in paragraph D and E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
Alright, thank you. Okay, um, we do have a, uh, a card that's in, uh, opposition, uh, if you would like to defer your time?
I will.
Alright.
I will defer.
Alright, thank you. So we have one card, it's L Daniel Eaton.
I'm L Daniel Eaton, I live at four twenty-two North Spruce Street, which, uh, borders the property that is in question. It's a very simple request, I've talked to everybody in our neighborhood with the exception of three residents. They are all opposed to putting two homes on a single lot. It's a beautiful neighborhood, it's old, our home is a hundred and twenty-four years old. We don't want two small, long homes next to our property. The person at four twelve is opposed to it, I was hoping that they would be here, I don't think they are. So I asked the commission to not approve this and keep the neighborhood nice and, and even with homes, um, that, that have enough property and enough yard to, uh, to look nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Uh, yes, go, go ahead Commissioner.
There's a home currently or a house currently on the lot?
Yes, sir, there is. It's been condemned, the person moved out in the middle of the night and moved to Oregon, which really surprised us. Uh, it's to be torn down, it's been condemned. Um, the, the lot just isn't big enough to have two homes on a single lot that's going to look decent. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, I want to bring the applicant back up please. And feel free to address any of the opposition's concerns, uh, the floor is yours.
Nick Tucker with Tucker Land Surveying, uh, representing Icon Homes LLC. Uh, just to, just to correct what was read by Monty, it's going to be hardy board siding and not vinyl and architectural shingles on the roof, not standard shingles. Uh, each one of these units would be between eighteen hundred and two thousand square foot, uh, single-family homes and they would be period correct. Uh, Icon, uh, Mr. Chandler with Icon Homes builds period correct homes, so they match the facade and the neighborhood. And again, there is an existing home on the property, uh, that needs to be redone, so, just to, just trying to improve the neighborhood.
I'm going to open the floor up for any commissioners, do you have any questions, comments, statements?
I have a question for staff, um, Monty, so the, the variances they're, they're requesting are for lot size and side yard setback only, is that correct?
Uh, no, there are no, are no variances, this is a plan, this is a planned development. So they, uh, the applicant just proposes what, how they want to develop the property?
Okay.
And then there are no variances.
Okay, um, so then, that being said, I will bring up for those that are super geeky like me. Um, R three zone requires a five-foot setback and a five thousand square foot lot?
Yes.
Both of these lots are within ten percent or less, actually less than ten percent of what would be required for any standard lot within the R three zone. So just want to throw that out there.
Thank you Commissioner. Any other, uh, comments, questions? If not, I would love to entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty-six, file number Z dash one zero zero seven three. As submitted with all staff's recommendations and conditions in the agenda staff report.
Have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, may I get a roll call vote please? Yes, sir, Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Hart? Hodges?
No.
McDonald?
No.
Person?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Vogel?
No.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, six votes, the motion carries. It's approved, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out. Alright, let's move right along accordingly, uh, item number twenty-seven, Z dash one zero zero eight three. If the applicant is present, we will ask, um, to make their way to the podium here. And the applicant is here and we could do a brief summarized, uh, of the applicances on the consent agenda.
Item twenty-seven, file number Z ten thousand eighty-three, this is the Access Village P O D located at seventy-eight fourteen T Street. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property from P C D to P O D to develop an on-campus facility to serve persons with developmental disabilities. Th- this is the property that was formerly Miss Selma School Campus. The applicant notes that the development will serve a greater mission of offering long-term rental solutions for adults with disabilities who seek to live independently and engage fully within their community. The property, uh, the development does include a maximum number of thirty-four single-family and duplex-type rental, uh, residential units ranging in size from four hundred and fifty to fifteen hundred square feet. Uh, there'll also be other, uh, buildings for, uh, recreational and, and, uh, dining purposes, uh, et cetera, located on the property. Uh, staff is in support of the requested P O D, the proposed campus represents an opportunity for many families to provide their loved ones with an inclusive, supportive living environment that will not only foster the development of individuals with disabilities to thrive, but also empower them to contribute meaning, meaningfully to the broader community. Staff recommends approval of this P O D rezoning subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph D, E, and F and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
Thank you, Monty, uh, applicant, please state your name for the record.
Roy Andrews, Holloway Engineering.
Alright, Mr. Andrews, uh, there is one card in opposition, you can defer your time or you can speak now.
We'll defer our time.
Alright, thank you. There is only one card and I believe this is, um, is it Joe, uh, Henelly? Am I saying that correctly, or is it T J? There's two different, uh, names, uh, on here. Alright. Yeah, so applicant? Yeah, as a matter of fact, this is on the consent agenda, so being that made, um, if you have any other comments, you can, if not, uh, we can turn it back over, uh, for a motion.
I just, I just have one quick question, um, per engineering, we had a little different site plan. Is, is, does that make a difference in, it had, at the request of Dylan, it was a T?
Right, if, if the, um, if the P R D is, or the P D?
P O D.
P O D is approved, um, there can be some adjustments made to, uh, certain things as long as the development is not increased in intensity. So things like the street design can be tweaked, uh, and I know our engineering division, uh, would like to see a little different, uh, more of a T, T-type, uh,
Yes.
ending to the street rather than a cul-de-sac. Uh, I know the applicant does have plans for that and that, those can be tweaked after, after approval.
Now, I'll, before we do a, make a motion or a vote, uh, you haven't seen the, any kind of tweaks that they've made. But if it's nothing major, you're saying it should be okay, or should we, would you all would like another look at it?
No, 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 we, we've actually seen, uh, some possible revision to the street design, um, hasn't been fully reviewed or anything. But, uh, it is in keeping in line with what engineering would like to see.
Okay.
So.
Alright, uh, in that case, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty-seven, Z dash one zero zero eight three, as submitted with all staff's recommendations and conditions in the agenda staff report.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second, may I get a roll call vote please?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Hart? Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion passes. Alright, motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright. Alrighty, and give them a quick second, and moving on to item number twenty-eight, Z dash one zero zero eight four. E N Y Development?
Yes.
Alright, obviously, we have the applicant present here, um, Monty, uh, if you will, would you like to give a brief summarization?
Item twenty-eight, file number Z ten thousand eighty-four, E N Y Development LLC, P D R located at fifteen sixteen South Ringo Street. The applicant is proposing to rezone this property from R four to P D R to allow a single-family residential development. The seventy-five foot, a hundred and forty foot lot, which is actually one and a half platted lots, is proposed to be subdivided into two separate lots, each being thirty-seven and a half by a hundred and forty feet. Each will contain a two-story, single-family residence and, uh, these residences will be marketed for sale. Uh, each single-family residence will be approximately a little over fifteen hundred square feet in area, separate concrete driveways from Ringo Street. The, uh, there is a two-car garage for each residence and each, each residence will be constructed of vinyl siding with brick base and asphalt shingles. Uh, to staff's knowledge, there are no outstanding issues associated with this application and staff recommends approval of the requested P D R zoning subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
Thank you, Monty, uh, there are three cards in opposition, would you like to defer your time and come back?
Yes, we'll defer.
Alright. Alright, so we have, uh, the first card is Mia Foreman, if you're present?
I am, I, Angel has a card, could you go before I do?
Yes, of course. Yes, Angel, Burt, if you, please make your way to the podium. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Of course, when I thought I was ready here, I apologize. Okay, well, good evening, um, uh, commissioners and, um, thank you so much for having me here once again, my name is Angel Burt, I am the executive director of the Dunbar Historic Neighborhood Association. Dunbar is actually the first African-American community here in Little Rock, Arkansas, I'm very proud to say. The lot at fifteen sixteen Ringo is more than just an empty piece of land. It is a place that holds our stories, our heritage, and our shared history. To move forward without honoring what this ground represents would be a loss not only to our neighborhood, but to the values we all hold dear. The lot is a living re- a reminder of a legacy built by those who contributed to much of our community and our country. It symbolizes resilience, hard work, and commitment to building something lasting for generations to come. The Bushes Row, known as The Bushes Row for a famous businessperson that, um, developed Mosaic Templars, which was an insurance company for African-Americans in, uh, nineteen twelve. Booker T. Washington did the inaugural address and now it is a Mosaic Templars Cultural Center that houses all African-American history in the state of Arkansas and rightfully so. It was also a publishing company, a hospital, as well as a savings and loan bank. The proposal doesn't reflect, the, the, the developer's proposal does not reflect the character or respectfulness of the surrounding area. The design and scale diverge, diverges from the historic unity that makes the neighborhood special, risking the disruption of our neighborhood cultural history. The home was once the home of Milton Crenshaw that was demolished, um. We didn't think that if a home was on the national registry that the house could be demolished. It was, um, prevented from going to demolition, um, several times. I also wanted to reiterate that, um, also mention, I should say, that, um, the original owner, um, offered D H and A the property. And we were in negotiations after finding out the property had a lien on it for seventy-five thousand dollars and then finding that that was, um, a, a misprint, it was seventy-five hundred dollars. And then in the interim, the owner decided to sell it now to the new developers. It is, in times like these, places with history and meaning reminds us of who we are and where we come from. Preserving the integrity of this lot isn't about, it's not just about saving a space, it's about holding on to a part of a collective identity. Protecting this lot as a historic site offers a long-term vision that enriches the community both culturally and economically. Preserving its legacy, uh, meaning, respecting our past while paving the way for meaningful growth and new opportunity. Uh, we've had several, um, tours of the Dunbar Historic District with, uh, Neighborhood USA as well as the National Park Service because of its historical significance. And we're working to broaden that, um, tourism attraction to the community. We're also surrounded by several other historic districts in the community. Um, Central High Historic District as well as, um, Quapaw Quarters, the Governor's Mansion, and also MacArthur's Park. So again, this area, downtown area is very significant to our city. In closing, we urge you to see this lot for what is truly a foundation of strength and unity that deserves our care and respect. Thank you for your time and your commitment to thoughtful decision-making, appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, next card is Trisha Bean. Oh, uh, you know what, I'm sorry, we had Mia Foreman, would you like to? Okay. Ms. Bean, you can approach the podium. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much for hearing from us today, I'm getting over something, so I'm a little dry-mouthed, so apologize for that. So I did submit a letter of opposition to all of the commissioners, hopefully you got that, but I'd like to go ahead and start off by reading that to you today. My name's Trisha Bean, I'm the executive director of the Quapaw Quarter Association and I've been working with the Dunbar Historic National, um, Neighborhood Association to try and protect this property as well as many other properties in the Dunbar Historic Neighborhood. The Quapaw Quarter Association strongly opposes the staff's recommendation to approve the rezon- the rezoning and subdivision of the property at fifteen sixteen Ringo Street into two lots for single-family homes. Re-request that these comments, well, they are going to be shared here today, and that they are on the official record. The property at fifteen sixteen once held a home of profound historical significance, recognized on the National Register of Historic Places as part of the Charles Thompson Houses, a collection of designed by Little Rock's leading early twentieth-century architect. The home was inhabited by Bush family members associated with the Mosaic Templars and the Milton Pitts Crenshaw, a pioneering Tuskegee airmen. He was Arkansas's first aviation instructor at Tuskegee and a Congressional Gold Medal recipient. This site embodied black history, resilience, and community heritage. Tragically, despite its recent designation on Preserve Arkansas's Most Endangered List, in spring twenty twenty-four, the house was demolished, stripping this community of a priceless cultural asset. The developer now proposes to subsidize this land into two narrow lots that are starkly out of character with the block's historic integrity. Unlike the original expansive lots that symbolized the Bushes family's affluence and influence, these new cramped homes failed to honor the site's legacy. The proposed materials and design sharply diverge from the architectural standards of the neighborhood. The designs lack compatibility in materials, size, and scale, which are essential to preserving the block's historic character. Specifically, infill houses should be compatible with the other houses on the block face, primarily constructed with brick or horizontal wood siding. Sorry. A good reference is MacArthur Park Guidelines for Infill Construction, which dictates material size, scale, and setback to ensure appropriate infill. However, the developer's proposal includes large, front-facing garages that dominate the facades, a starkly modern aesthetic that omit front porches, and significantly fewer windows than the surrounding historic homes. These features disrupt the architectural continuity of the neighborhood, diminishing its cohesive historic feel. In addition to architectural concerns, we have significant reservations about the impact of increased car density on this block. The existing homes along Ringo Street are positioned on larger lots, allowing for more green space and less car-centric design. In contrast, the proposed development would introduce two homes with a more suburban layout, focusing on prominent garages and driveways. This will likely result in more cars parked on the street, increasing congestion, and further eroding the block's pedestrian-friendly and historic character. These added vehicles will make the neighborhood less community-minded and accessible for everyone, especially for visitors, delivery services, and emergency responders. I also, in my letter, included images of the developer submitted front elevation sketch alongside images of homes on the block for reference, so you can see the comparison. These visual references provide a clear comparison illustrating the disparity in design and scale between the proposed infill homes and the historic structures that define this neighborhood. The QQA alongside the Dunbar Historic Nat Neighborhood Association met with the developer to discuss alternative approaches. We encouraged them to either sell the lot to a cultural organization or institution, or submit a design that respects the block's history by prioritizing compatibility in materials, size, and design. Unfortunately, the current submission does not reflect any of our recommendations. The rezoning request from R four to PDR to allow two single-family lots introduce excessive density and scale that is discordant with the neighborhood's character. Historically, this block has housed four homes on expensive expansive lots, each reflecting the cultural and architectural heritage of the neighborhood. Replacing this legacy with narrower, smaller homes with incongruent design features disrupts the block's visual unity and threatens its cultural integrity. Restoring and preserving historic, historic places is essential to distinguishing a city and celebrating its unique heritage. These sites are not just physical structures. They are living expressions of a community's past, its stories, and its cultural legacy. By maintaining and honoring historic architecture, a city fosters a sense of pride among its residents and creates a vibrant, authentic atmosphere that attracts visitors. Historic neighbors, neighborhoods, and buildings give a place character and depth, making it stand out in an increasingly homogenized world. People are drawn to cities with a rich, layered history where the past is woven into the fabric of daily life. It, it's these distinctive features, whether it's a charming historic district, a well-deserved landmark, preserved landmark, or a cultural significant site, that make a city feel more like a place to live or that you would like to visit. It becomes a place to experience, to connect with, and to return to. In preserving our history, we not only honor the past, but also enrich the future, creating a community that residents want to stay in and that visitors want to return to. Maintaining the historic character of this block is crucial for its potential designation as a historic district. The proposed modern materials and reduced footprints of the, on these new homes undermine this potential risking future development that could detract from the area's historic sites and values. We urge the developer to revisit their proposal to better honor the neighborhood's historic scale, legacy, and aesthetic cohesion, preserving the essential character of this culturally significant block. The QQA recommends that the applicant revise the design to better align with the neighborhood's preserve, or sorry, preferred material size and architectural style to ensure the new homes blend with the adjacent historic structures. And we strongly disagree with staff's recommendation of approval and ask that the Planning Commission deny this request. And then I would also just like to say, like, we're not talking about a suburb here. We're talking about a neighborhood that's essential to the fabric of Little Rock and to the character of our city. Think about strong preservation and, and character in iconic cities that we all love to visit like New Orleans or Savannah or Charleston. We'd like to continue to have that kind of look in history here in Little Rock to attract new visitors and to keep our residents here in a place that they can be, uh, proud of and have a lot of pride in. We are talking about legacy and honoring the history and people of Little Rock, protecting and building upon our identity here. Protecting the legacy of a property that is unique in its history and importance and character. Thank you so much for listening to us today. I hope you'll really consider these comments, and if you need to see the pictures, I have some here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have, uh, the last card is Mia Foreman.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can we have the, the speaker distribute the pictures to us while we're listening to this next?
Uh, yes. Please, you can give them to Jeremy here. He would distribute it out to us. Ms. Foreman, uh, floor is yours.
Good evening, um, and thank you for having us. I know it's getting late, so I'll speed up. Um, my name is Maya Foreman, and I own the Bush Home to the right. It's at fifteen twenty-four South Ringo. I get a little emotional about this because that house shouldn't have been torn down in the first place. And it is frustrating because I bought my home, I bought this house because it, my home because it was, um, one of the Bush Homes, which was the founding members of the Mosaic Templars. It, um, has historical significance. We have been, my husband and I have been in contact with some, um, employees of Mosaic Templars about getting the, um, grants that are offered to, um, continue to restore the homes, um, our home. And, um, it hasn't been said this evening, um, more than once Angel has spoken on it, but the, um, the proposed property, there were people that wanted to buy it, but they wouldn't sell it to us. And I mean us as in black people. It wasn't that that home that was, it was just sitting there and it was raggedy and nobody wanted it. The people that owned it wouldn't sell it to people that look like me. So it is, I feel like it is a spit in my community's face to tear down a historical home like that and slap up some two-story trailer, trailers, because that's really what it looks like, um, and subdivide that property. I'm also a real estate broker. The character of the community is one of the reasons why I purchased the home that I purchased. There is historical significance that's already been spoken of. And I think when you come into a community and you throw up metal buildings, it has to be acknowledged that this historical significance is not just important to me and the people that live there, that grew up there, the people that look like me, but the people in the community as a whole because we are important. And, uh, I think allowing these properties to be put up the way they are. I agree something needs to be put there because I don't want my home next to an empty lot. But it doesn't need to look like that. It, um, I believe that it needs to be congruent, um, with what's there. I don't think that when this plan was submitted, there was any obvious consideration of the historical value of that area. Because if there was, you would put something there that looked like the homes that are there. Um, and with that being said, um, I just, I am against approving a metal home in place of where a histor- historical structure was. I think the significance of putting these up will be of, um, will harm the property values, including mine. And I think those factors should be considered, uh, when you approve something that is drastically different than what was there. And so I am opposition, and I hope you will consider the historical significance of the property that was there and the land that is there, and the historical significance that it is to the people that own properties in that home, in that, in that, in that block. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, can we please bring the applicant back up, please?
Roy Andrew. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Roy Andrews, Holloway Engineering. Um, I want to answer a couple of the questions or respond to a couple of questions. Um, if, y'all may not remember, we brought this last time and it was three lots instead of two. Uh, we went back and yielded to the neighbors so that it didn't quote, "look like an apartment complex." Um, yielded back to two lots. If you do, if you pull up, uh, Google Earth, Street View, or Google Earth, you'll see that this lot size is not the smallest lot in the neighborhood. You can go a couple of blocks, north, south, east, and west, and you'll see that there are lot sizes that range from twenty-five feet to seventy-five feet. We're proposing two thirty-three, roughly thirty-three-foot-wide lots, so we're, we're not going to the smallest. Um, as far as street parking, i- if you actually look in that view, you'll see along this street, there are several street, uh, cars parked on the street. They're proposing a double-car driveway. That, some houses in this neighborhood have driveways. Most of them are single driveways. Some of those houses, um, actually access parking in the rear through alleyways. We're not proposing that because this isn't a full alleyway on this block. Um, but they are providing off-street parking, so we see that that actually provides a better opportunity to get cars off the street. Um, and the house was condemned, and that is the reason that it was torn down. It was not salvageable. And I will, we'll answer any more questions, or I will let the developer speak.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your time this evening. I'll try to make this brief. Um, uh, the seller reached out to us, uh, or their, their agent, and told us they had some lots in the area for sale, um, because they had seen some homes that we've built. We've built six homes, beautiful homes, in this area, and we're trying to meet a need. Um, we're, you know, experiencing a housing crisis, and we're trying to build affordable, but also beautiful, you know, contemporary, modern homes. Um, we met with the Dunbar and the Quapaw Association, and we listened to their concerns about the design of the homes, and we redesigned them. Uh, we also went from three homes to two. Um, and, you know, we think these homes will be a beautiful addition. The home that sat, uh, when we purchased the property was not only condemned, but it was placed on the city of Little Rock's unsafe vacant abandoned homes in January of twenty twenty-three. Um, it was, it was dangerous, and we didn't know anything about the history. Like I said, we never even met the seller. I don't think that they, uh, reached out to us because of us being white or black. I don't, they probably didn't know, you know, wh- what we looked like. They just wanted to see this area developed, and there are lots of homes that are sitting condemned and boarded up, and they, uh, they wanted to see, you know, development. And so we purchased the lot, we tore down the house, and we planned to build two new beautiful homes. And with respect to the history, we, we do respect the history, and we never meant to, uh, bring harm. We were just trying to make things better. So, thank you.
When we did, uh, I'm John Pemberton. You don't have to call me Doc. Um, we bought the property because we built a bunch of homes around the area. We bought it. We knew the house was unlivable, so we just, we took it down the next day. Unknown to us was the history. Since that time, in the last few months, us trying to get this approved, and then we decided to back off, back off, because we kept hearing about the con- concerns. We went from three properties, which I thought would just be feasible, to two, to three different, uh, uh, architectural changes. I'm not sure what we're trying to do. We weren't trying to do anything wrong. It was unknown. I understand the history, and a lot of the talk has been about history and all that, and I understand that. I'm a part of history. We're all part of history. But we did meet with them, and we met with them at lunch. We talked about the things. They said they were going to buy it. This could have been purchased for eighteen thousand dollars.
They wouldn't sell it to us.
Well, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I want to make sure we can keep.
No one approached me about buying it at that time. So someone could have bought it for eighteen thousand dollars. But they didn't buy it for eighteen thousand. We paid eighteen thousand. We paid fourteen thousand to demolition and put up new homes. That was the intent. That's all we were trying to do, build some new homes.
Alright, at this time, I want to open the floor up to any Commissioners with any particular questions or statements for the applicant or, uh, an opposition.
I have a quick question for the opposition.
Yes.
The two ladies who were executive directors, I believe, of the Dunbar and the.
You can, you can come up to the podium to answer the question.
Yes.
Does y'all's organizations have funds to purchase properties?
No, we're both, we both work for nonprofits.
So y'all do not have budget monies to buy historic homes in the areas that y'all represent?
No, however, we were working to, um, rate, well, recently, first of all, they just met with us last Thursday.
I'm just asking about y'all's organizations.
Yes.
Not real familiar with them, but.
We would like to.
You're trying to preserve historic homes. Hope you would have some funds to purchase.
We do have some funds.
Properties that are important to y'all.
We do have some funds, but we usually are able to find a cultural institution or, or organization in this case that could, um, purchase that home and do something else with it.
Okay.
And that's what we've encouraged them to do is to sell to that, as I said.
And also, like I said before, the original owner, um, was in negotiation of selling us the home for ten thousand dollars. But he wanted us to do his driveway, his personal driveway at his home, and as a nonprofit, we weren't able to negotiate that. So when we did the title search on the house, again, like I said before, we saw the seventy-five thousand dollar lien was a typo, and inadvertently.
Yeah, it looked like it sold for about five thousand. It looked like it sold for about sixteen, according to tax records within the last couple of years, so. Just didn't know if y'all had funds to purchase homes. That's all I was asking.
Thank you.
Commissioner, before you, let me ask them one quick question while they're up here. Did you have a question for them or just in general? So I just want to ask a quick question. So you all had a meeting, and you all were displeased with the character of the homes that was presented?
Uh, with the developers?
Yes, with the charact-.
Yeah.
They, they said they changed it several times.
We actually had two, two discussions. They've, they've never changed it. They, 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 um, showed us, they proposed something on a, on a, um, on a, on their phone. But our, but to be transparent, to be very honest, when we had our meetings with, with the developer, uh, we initially started to talk about, you know, you know, making, maybe they could, uh, do the driveway in the back of the home. We kind of, the aesthetics wasn't pleasing to us. We were kind of going back and forth just to be respectful. And then finally, Tricia said, "Well, look, really, we want to be able to buy the lot back from you." And so we started that conversation with them. We got through the conversation to the point where, um, the developers said, "Well, look, uh, we paid forty thousand dollars for this, this, uh, property. If you guys can raise the money by spring, we'll." If you guys can raise the money by spring, we'll allow you to do that. And um uh Mr. J D left the restaurant. And, and Erica, myself and Tricia were there and we had a verbal agreement. That we would try to raise the money, not try, but we would raise the money to purchase the lot back from them. Because again, this is on a historic block. It's not like you have, you know, manufactured homes or. You know, other modern type of homes within that block and it's significant to the historic district. And we explained that to them and they, and they said, well, we, you know, they were just saying that they didn't know or what have you. And so respectfully to each other, we talked about, let's, let us buy it back. Matter of fact, J D said. Oh, why didn't you just say that in the first place? And we were like, oh, cool, great. Cause we were like on eggshells thinking, well, look, we don't want to just come out and just say, give us this, you know, give it, it's their property. We understand that. However. We wanted to make sure they understood the significance of it and, and what, how, what, how valuable it is to. The historic district for preservation. And they, they seemed like they understood. Matter of fact, um Erica um said that she would uh give us the receipts to show us exactly what they've spent on the lot. And we were like, okay, fine. So next day we had an email saying, no, we're not gonna do that. Because, because let me just say this one last thing, because it was, that was on last Wednesday, on Thursday.
It was Thursday.
I mean, it's on Thursday, but we wanted. No, but we wanted them to pull the drawings because how, how are we gonna raise funds by. Spring when you still have the drawings on the table? And they just told us they weren't gonna do it. So I, I just wanted to make sure that that story was told transparently. Because we really want that property to be, remain historic on that block.
No, I, I just, I understand. Give me, um please hold your thoughts for one second. Commissioner, did you have?
The structure that was there was on some type of historic registry or something?
Yes.
It's a voluntary listing.
It was individually listed, yes.
It has, it has no covenants, no restrictions. It is entirely voluntary. Uh it has, Dunbar neighborhood is not a local ordinance district. They have no design review guidelines. There is nothing preventing the developer from doing exactly what they would like to do.
Yes, and I'm so glad that you mentioned that because, you know, you don't know what you don't know, but when you find out, you have to do better, right? So those are some of the things that we're looking at doing, making it, you know, making it its own historic district. Uh we're working with the Q Q A in order to do that because these, these are the sort of things that will happen.
That is wonderful news. I was on the Q Q A board um prior to our new director. Um however, new construction does not jeopardize your historic district.
It, it can in design.
No, it cannot. If you have more than fifty percent contributing in a historic district, new homes do not dilute that number.
Okay, then I, I need to, I wish that I could, because I have been working on it and they've told us that it would, does put that in jeopardy. Um but I did want to clarify a few things. Uh you, the developers said that they met with the Q Q A several times and adjusted their plans. The first time I met them and even talked to them at all was last Thursday night. We met with them at four o'clock at a restaurant. They did request the time and we were glad to hear from them. We were happy that they wanted to do something with us. And we went there in good faith. And when we left that meeting, we actually were happy because we thought, oh, we came to a resolution, you know? And we let our guards down. We thought, oh, it's, they actually told us they were not gonna move forward with the planning commission. They said they were gonna withdraw. And um and Angel kind of eloquently spoke about the rest of that, but. Um yeah, so we felt a little duped, but they did not work with Q Q A. These designs do not reflect what the guidance that we gave them last Thursday. Uh but again, even then, we didn't go so much into design because as soon as they brought up the fact that they would be willing to sell the, the, the land. To a cultural institution or an organization to help us do something that.
We are, we are here to vote on the application, so.
Yes.
Any conversations that have been had before tonight, they're not generally material to what we're dealing with.
And I would also say they did know about the demolition or when they demol- demolish, sorry, when they demolished the property. They absolutely knew it was Tuskegee Airmen's House and there are records with the city that they were notified about.
And all the other properties are on the national registry.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do now, because I don't want to infringe on their time. And so I'm gonna have the applicants come back up. Thank you. And Monty, did you?
Is, is it okay if staff makes a, a quick statement?
Yes, please.
Since staff recommendation was brought into question here, um. A few facts about the property. This is actually a lot and a half. It's not a single lot. It's a lot and a half. The lot sizes are gonna be thirty-seven and a half feet. I think uh Mr. Andrews mistakenly said thirty-three. The property is zoned R four, which is a two-family duplex zoning. The applicant, the property owner could apply and obtain today a permit to build a duplex on this property. For two rental units, but instead they're requesting to divide it into two lots. To build two new single-family homes to introduce two new families to the neighborhood. And staff feels that that is an excellent idea for an infill development and that's why we support the prob- the uh project.
Alright, thank you, staff. Uh are there any other comments or questions from any of the commissioners? From the applicant or any in opposition? If not, I would uh love to entertain a, a motion.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty-eight, file number Z dash one zero zero eight four. As submitted with all staff's recommendations and conditions in the agenda staff report.
I need a second. Alright, I have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please? Yes, sir. Commissioner Hart, Hodges.
No.
McDonald?
No.
Person?
No.
Samad?
No.
Vogel?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
No.
Motion fails. Thank you very much, applicant.
Thank you.
Well, we only have one, we only have one left if, uh commissioners, if you'd like to take five. If not, we can. We can push through and go for the last one here. Yeah, we'll do the last, we have one more. Alright, I, I know. We have one commissioner have to leave, so, but we still have a quorum, so we can, we can go. Uh item number thirty-two. Item number thirty-two, uh if the applicant is present, Z dash one zero zero six seven. If the applicant is present, please make your way. And while we're doing that, we will have a, a brief summary reading. Monty, if you will. Thirty-two.
Item thirty-two, file Z ten thousand sixty-seven. This is the Tran S T R two P D C located at thirty Summerland Court. The act proposed to rezone this zero point five two acre property from R two to P D C to allow use of the property as a short-term rental to. With a maximum stay of twenty-nine days. The owner will not reside in the residence and the entire structure will be rented as one unit. Uh there have been no Department of Planning and Development enforcement cases nor police reports on this property. And the property has been in operation as a short-term rental since March of twenty twenty-four. Currently, the city has a hundred and six uh approved short-term rentals on our, uh in our database. And there are no approved S T Rs located within a quarter mile of this site. Staff does recommend approval of the P D C zoning subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis through the agenda staff report.
Alright, thank you, Monty. Uh applicant, please state your name for the record.
My name is Stephanie Chan. This is my husband, Han Pham.
Alright. Thank you. Alright, so um we have several cards in opposition. Um you can defer your time and then come back afterwards or you have the, you can have the floor now.
We'll defer time.
Alright, thank you. Okay, so we have several uh cards in opposition and we have a total of twenty uh minutes. It looked like we have uh a host of cards.
I'm gonna ask if we can have Mr. Tim to go first. Everybody agrees, we'd like to have him.
Tim? Okay, Tim, could you please come to the podium, please? And Tim, can you state your name for the record? Cause I have a host of cards in here. I want to make sure we.
Okay. Jonathan Tim.
Alright, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um first of all, I'd like to start by saying this is my first opportunity. To actually sit in on a planning commission meeting. I have learned a lot and I understand the responsibility that y'all are charged with. To make good decisions, wise decisions on the planning of the city. I've lived here pretty much my entire life. And I have a lot of experience with the neighborhoods. I'd like to see the best for the, for Little Rock going forward. Um, thank you for having us here today. I know this has been a long evening for everybody. Uh but we are here to voice our concerns uh with this application. Uh which you did state is for a S T R, short-term rental property. And what we know as um as a residential property. That's where we live. Uh my wife and I have lived thirty-plus years just up the street on Summerland Court. And um. We did some uh research when we found out about this attempt to rezone. We knew that there would be opposition to it. So um we did do some looking into it and we do have a copy of the Bill of Assurance for Leddington Heights. And that Bill of Assurance is very straightforward on the land use covenant clause. Where it states that this Leddington Heights Bill of Assurance uh is for residential use only. In fact, this was approved by the Little Rock Planning Commission in nineteen seventy-eight.
Before you continue, sir, is that Bill of Assurance still in effect legally?
Uh I haven't checked. Uh it is uh.
Have a homeowners association and a design review committee?
I believe it calls for that and uh. Uh well, I don't think we would have a formal one, yeah. I don't think though the, it states that it expires. I think it's extended, but I leave, I don't, I don't know for sure. Um but we do know that we consider this property of ours residential. Because that's the reason we moved here in the first place. And there are several people here behind me that did make it out here tonight and I want to leave time for them, but a few thoughts are. Is that we have to ask, why was this done in the first place? Um you know, many of us are puzzled. We didn't know that West Little Rock was considered a tourist area. I'm not being facetious, but seriously, we do have a lot of nice things around us. We've got hiking trails. Uh we've got state parks. Uh but we're not an area that would typically in our minds be considered. Uh a place to put a s- short-term rental property. Um. Many of the neighbors that we talked to um have job responsibilities, so. We didn't know exactly who could come, but we've had a number of people here tonight. We're very happy to have them. And I think they're gonna share some of their thoughts. One of the things we wanted to do was to give the neighbors an opportunity to have a voice because we knew that some of them. Would just not be able to make the meeting due to other commitments. So we made a petition and we circulated that petition. And in a relatively short span of time, we uh acquired about sixty signatures. From people in the immediate neighborhoods and then just a couple of adjoining streets uh off of the area there. So we knew then that people were very serious about the opposition and, and they were not hesitant to sign the petition. I believe it was distributed to uh the commission. We were, we did send these in on Tuesday. So they have, they have been distributed here and you may have them in your packet. But um what we did in our petition was we basically just shared that if an S T R is allowed. Uh we got some concerns and these include uh the safety of the area being affected. Decreased property values being a concern, a lack of community stability. Uh also increased noise and disruption as well as parking and traffic issues. And we're concerned that if those items are present, uh it's going to affect our neighborhood's health and safety. And as well as uh our right to enjoy our property in peace and quiet. So we do take the position, this is a residential neighborhood and we want to keep it that way. So we do not want to deal with the stress that an S T R could bring to our area. And for that, we respectfully ask the planning commission to not approve the rezoning application. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card is Gwendolyn Smith.
Good afternoon. Um I am Gwendolyn Smith and I am, I have the privilege of being the, the next door neighbor to this. Said um. Issue that we're having tonight. Um. I've lived there for about two years now and um ever since this has become an issue. Um coming, coming aboard, I've never really met them. We never see them at all. Uh but I see a lot of their guests coming in and out and it's, it causes safety precautions for me and my family. Um being a female, you know, you can come home at any time or whatever and there's several different cars at several different times. We've had several complaints. Um I have grandchildren that. You're kind of hesitant about letting them out because you don't know who it is or what they're about or, you know, for safety reasons. Um. I just really wish before um a decision is made of, of. If this is good for our community, to just get to know our community. Um I feel like I should have brought a um receipt book or something because I pick up all the trash that's leftover. Or it's, you know, blown onto our, our house or our yard. Weeks that, every week. Um shower times, they're, they don't even roll the trash out for the trash people to pick it up on Tuesdays. You know, it's just overflowing and it's, we, we pride ourselves in the community to keep it, our yards up. You know, just because we work hard for what we have. But if you're not gonna maintain your property and issue it out for the next person, what good is it doing for us? You know, we, we, it's not very many of us there. We survived the storm and all that. Only to have to worry about what is the next guest gonna look like or. How much damage are they gonna do? How much trash do I have to pick up or my husband have to pick up? Just to have a safe, a safety net for our families. So I do oppose of this um. What do you call it? The um.
S T R.
That, I oppose. Uh just because I feel like if you're gonna do something like that, take accountability and make sure you clean up what your tenants mess up. And not just be another, you know, another car that pulls up and block your driveway or whatever. It's not fair to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card is Cynthia Tim. Alright.
Would you mind us changing this? We already had this planned, who was gonna talk.
Yes, go ahead.
From Michael Monroe.
Alright, come on up here. Alright, the floor is yours.
Awesome. This is uh my first time in one of these and I just want to say thank you so much for what you guys each have to do for the city of Little Rock. Um again, my name is Michael Monroe. Um I am definitely here to oppose the short-term rental of thirty Summerland. My house is directly catty corner, uh staring at Ms. Gwen. Uh my front yard literally stares at the property. Um the property in question is directly in front of us. It's a cul-de-sac. My wife and I purchased this home early in February of this year because our family is growing. My young son is just hit eighteen months. I've got another son on the way uh coming in May. And I just had visions of them playing basketball in the cul-de-sac like I grew up in Echo Valley, just right around the corner. Um the reason we bought this home is because it is a cul-de-sac. It's quiet. There was no traffic. I didn't have to worry about my kids running around the front yard without any, you know. Safety concern or someone constantly coming into the, the driveway. It's super quiet. Um that was one of the main reasons that we purchased the house. So much so that I spent an extra thirty thousand dollars after buying the house on a front porch so we could sit there and watch the sunsets. Um and literally we love being outside and so that was literally like, it's like the perfect spot. Unfortunately, after the storm, there's, you can actually see on that hill. Growing up, it was all wood. You couldn't see anything. Now that the storm has come through. It, it reminds me of Southern California. You can see for days and it's just beautiful to watch a sunset there. Um but the problem since March when we moved in. There has been countless number of people in cars and noises and. An example I wrote down was that there was a cooking station with multiple food trucks blocking up the cul-de-sac. And as Gwen said about the trash, I'm talking about piles of gre- ice-throne restaurants. Grease, forty-plus trash bags of trash in the front yard sitting for three, four days. That, this isn't just, it, we, I was literally. Went up and talked to Chan, like what's happening? Like I'm knocking on neighbors, trying to meet people, like what's going on with this house? Cause it. It's just, I've, I'm not used to that. It being a residential property, growing up in Little Rock, born and raised here. Especially Echo Valley right around the corner. It's like, this is where people's homes are. It's not a short-term rental. Definitely didn't know as a vacation area, my. Definitely didn't know as a vacation area myself. Uh, there's no way to vet the people that are staying there. I have a wife and two children, or one children, one on the way. And that's a concern for me because I travel all over the state. I'm gone a lot. I drive a lot. I was in Fort Smith today, drove all the way back to make it here by four o'clock. I was in Fayetteville yesterday. Um, and so my wife is at home with my children alone a lot of the times and that's a concern to me that we can't vet who's staying in that house. And so, my major concerns are the safety of my family, the amount of traffic that has been coming in and out of our cul-de-sac on a day-to-day basis. The amount of trash that piles up not only blows in Gwen's yard, it's blowing in my yard. I'm having to clean that up every single week. The noise that comes from the property in the middle of the night and we don't know who to call or who to contact to say, hey, there's noise coming there. If not, I've got to call or put in a complaint with L R P D at ten-thirty at night. My infant's asleep. I don't know who to, there's no one to contact. They don't even live in state. And then lastly, it's the long-term implications and the overall value and the investment I have made for my family in that home. And so again, I just thank you for your time and the service to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. For um, for lack of time, um, and we have, still have a host of cards. You have other-
Yes. Mr. Coleman was gonna speak.
All right. Daryl Coleman?
All right, we have both of them. Come on.
All right. And please state your name for the record.
I'm Daryl and uh-
You bet Coleman.
Coleman.
All right.
Um, we're adjacent on top of the hill. Excuse my voice. We've been there nineteen years. We actually just moved back in because of the tornado a year and four months. The new neighbors we know, but that house, we didn't know what it was. Uh, motion lights kicking on and off. We're concerned about who's coming in and out. I don't think that's a good idea to have that in that neighborhood. We raised our three kids, grown and productive. We just would like to keep that same quiet, stable neighborhood that we had. That's what we need to say. That's all.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, do we have another uh, speaker? I still have a host of cards that I can go through. I have a host of cards, but I know you wanted to delegate. Uh-
Mine's quick. Uh, I'm Virginia Bradshaw. I've lived in that neighborhood since nineteen eighty. There were only two or three houses there at the time. Uh, we need to recover from the tornado in that neighborhood. We don't need additional problems. Uh, there is a apartment con- you can see the tornado effect in this picture. That's Reservoir Park with no trees now. Um, people, I got a call off, about my home offering cash for my house uh, so that they could turn it into a rental, just a cold call. Um, I feel like our area because of the tornado is kind of being targeted in that way. And that um, the city of Little Rock would do us a favor if they would let us recover from the tornado and the problems that that created, rather than creating more additional problems for the neighborhood. And there's an apartment complex right behind this uh, property we're discussing that is condemned. It's a disaster area. Uh, that's what we need help with. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Vicki and Lawson McBride.
Anybody else? I was gonna go last.
And the time left is six minutes and twenty-seven seconds.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Lawson McBride and Vicki and I have lived at the corner of Old Forge and Summerland Court for twenty, uh, twenty-nine years. We love our wonderful neighborhood. This change will not improve our neighborhood. So, why do we want it? We don't want it. So, investors, I, you know, the, did they know about the zoning when they bought the place? Did the realtor tell them? Did the realtor tell them? I know the, uh, my Bill of Assurance, I've still have lived there and I thought it was inactive. I did not know I needed to start some kind of another organization to, for it to be active. So, if that's the case, okay. But it, we've been living there because it was residential. There was, I think around, was there seventy people that signed our petition?
Over sixty anyway.
Okay. But, you know, I, I got that, the le- the letter nine days ago. Nine days is all we've had to be able to think about this and decide what to do. And that was because I guess it had, it was that certification that was mailed from uh, Northern California. So, we, well, I'm sorry it's taking you guys. I appreciate y'all staying like this and we've all had to stay through this. Communications is huge and I've seen that at work here. I'm sort of like, uh, Tim, I have, I was, I'm amazed at what y'all have to do, the communications and problems y'all have to solve. But, all I know is that we don't need this. We don't. Please. Don't, don't let them have this. I'll tell you what, we would love to have you come and live with us. But if you're not gonna come live with, you're gonna make money out of our place and we don't know what's going on. We don't want us to do it, but we would love to have you come.
All right, thank you. Um, and so I'm gonna go down the list here with the time. Uh, we have, is it Arlene Burhardt?
I know it's late and I'm gonna be very, very short. I'm a retired teacher and I always think of the children. And our neighborhood has children. You talked about this man that has the two little ones. And I'm afraid that those children will not be able to have their yard and their home. Their parents are gonna be worried about who's in that house and what could happen. So, please do not let this happen in our neighborhood. I've lived there sixteen years and it's been a great neighborhood. Till now.
Thank you. Uh, Lois Moss?
I was gonna let it pass, but I don't, I, I live in the neighborhood, but I live over on Griss Mill Road. And we have the traffic already doubled to get to these, these other places. And again, like she says, we, the kids can't play outside. I had, I try to walk my dog. And you know how difficult that is when, you know, we don't have sidewalks. So, you gotta walk in the road. So, uh, I really don't, I've had renters. I've rented home, not, I haven't been a renter, but I've had a home that I've rented out. We finally sold it because the people who rent homes don't care about the home. So, please, especially now, you want somebody coming in a week or two weeks and then leaving? No. That, that's a bad, bad deal. It's gonna ruin the neighborhoods totally. Thank you.
Thank you. Mitchell Mosley? Uh, Mossley? Oh, you're not speaking? Okay, all right. Janice Rogers? All right. And um, David Rogers? All right. Steven Singleton? All right. Those were all of our cards in opposition. Can we please have the applicants please come up and, why are you coming up, Monty?
Mr. Just a quick note, uh, you have dropped eight commissioners.
Oh, that is. So, we have, actually, uh, as you heard staff, we have dropped to eight uh, commissioners. So, you will need uh, six uh, you know, votes to secure that.
We'll make this last. So, my wife and I, we um, first of all, I'm Han Bam. This is Stephanie Trent. That's my wife. We had this whole speech and we had this, all of these arguments for how we're going to prepare for this. And after hearing everybody talk about it and we hear your concerns, okay? She and, my wife and I are both Christians. We value family. So, we're both homeowners as well too. So, we've, you know, we've maintained a really good rating on Airbnb and our intent was just to make some income for our family. But if it's causing this much strife for the neighborhood, um, we would like to ask for a transition plan. Um, maybe three to six months or something like that for us to either find long-term renters. If not, then we're just gonna have to figure out how to sell the property.
You can ask to withdraw without prejudice.
Withdraw without when?
Without prejudice means you can come back with the same application if you wanted to.
Okay.
We'll withdraw.
You can withdraw without prejudice, but at your expense.
They can also defer the application and they can defer it for, I believe, according to your bios, up to about four months. Is it four months?
We would like to defer then. We just need a transition time.
Three months. So, they can defer it up to three months and then that, then make whatever changes they want to make during that time before it comes back and then withdraw.
Yeah.
But in point of clarification though, if they were to go to a long-term rental, there would not be a rezoning requirement for that.
Correct.
That's correct.
So, the deferral would only be if you intend to come back with the N S T R two.
Yes, go ahead, Chris. We have a question on the-
Do you live in Pulaski County?
No, we live in California.
Okay.
And I would, I would like to state something for the record. So, my aunt's old house is located directly adjacent at twenty-eight Summerland. So, technically, we're next-door neighbors. Um, my aunt no longer lives there. I do have long-term tenants. I grew up on Griss Mill. Uh, I know a lot of the folks in the audience. This is my neighborhood off Reservoir and Old Forge. And so, if this does come back before the commission, you know, I obviously value impartiality as an attorney and also as a commissioner. But if you would prefer, if you do bring this back before the commission, if you prefer that I not take uh, part in the voting, I'm happy to do so as well.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to let y'all know that.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. So, um, look like we have a deferral uh, from the applicant and uh, we want to make a motion. Oh, sorry, Monty.
Does the applicant wish to defer for three months? So, it would be to the February agenda.
Okay. So, the, uh, the applicant would like to defer into the February twenty-twenty-five meeting.
Make a motion to accept the applicant's uh, request for deferral until the February planning commission hearing.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. I want to clarify that this deferral will be at the cost of the applicant for notifications.
Mr. Chair, uh, may we allow?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, ma'am. Uh, no questions while we have a motion on the table, but we do have a commissioner.
I'm, I'm going to anticipate the question, but I think this is something that it would be good to clarify for the applicants as well as those in the audience. In light of this deferral, is the applicant allowed to continue to operate this as an uh, short-term rental? In the meantime, that is correct, right?
Yes. Act non-conformingly.
As, as, as long as there's an application pending, they can continue to operate.
Okay.
It, also, also it is, is this commission's policy, if you drop to eight commissioners, you accept an applicant's deferral until a future date.
All right. So, we have a motion already on the table and second for the, so let's get a roll call vote for this, please.
Sir, Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Hart? Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Samot? Vogel?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Hi.
Vickers?
Yes.
The application's been deferred to the February meeting.
It has been deferred. Thank you. Uh, thanks everyone for coming out and thank you for definitely waiting. I know it's been a, a long evening. So, we definitely appreciate your, your patience. Uh, do we have any other new business?
Yes, I want, I have, I have something. This is Commissioner-
Oh, yes.
Who's last meeting.
Yeah, we have, uh, ladies and gentlemen, we have Commissioner Vogel last meeting.
And he's trying to get out of here without-
He's served uh, six years. Give him a round of applause, please. Thank you very much, sir, for your service. All right. Hold on before, hold on, ladies and gentlemen, before we adjourn. Uh, if you gotta go, public comments. Do you, do you want to make your address? You want to make the address?
I do. It's more for stuff.
Okay. All right, no, we got, well, we have a commissioner will do something on the record. Ladies and gentlemen, before we uh, dismiss, before we adjourn, uh, we do have some uh, some comments. Uh, Commissioner Russell, uh, have some comments that he would like to make.
Um, so this is mostly for staff, uh, and also the city attorney's office. These S T R twos are codified in the ordinance. They have been approved, rules have been set. And this commission is acting against the ordinance without any justification. So, if we get sued, good luck, guys. If we want to change the ordinance, if we do not want these S T R twos, we have got to change the ordinance. You cannot keep voting against the ordinance without any justification. We just can't do it. If they meet the requirements, if staff is even recommending approval, we have a duty to approve the S T Rs. You do not have a leg to stand on in denial. So, if we're gonna-
How could we change anything?
Advocate, advocate. Call your board, call, call your board of director. Call your director. Say, we want this ordinance changed. That's where it needs to happen. This body cannot continue to act against the ordinance. Sue, please do.
We lived there. We had to say so.
To, to follow, listen, to follow on Commissioner Russell because, you know, sometimes Seattle re- stuff and once the case he's right. The ordinance is set, but the city of Little Rock has said that way. If you as citizens are against the ordinance, you do need to advocate for that. I would also encourage you to contact the state legislature because there are laws that are being considered at the state level that might actually make all this a moot point anyway. So, if you're that, if you're that concerned about it, you'd advocate both at the state and the local level.
Yes, and the state one, if it's like it, what happened last time, they would allow cities no control over S T Rs. I don't know whether that's coming back this time, but that was finally killed.
That, that is what's being considered. Hold, hold on for one second. Does any other commissioners have any other comments?
Well, is there not a limit on how many S T Rs?
Commissioner Baxter, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, I think-
Okay, so we just keep going and do and get five hundred.
Yep.
That is the card law.
And there is no, and there is no restriction on where they can be or how many of them there can be within proximity.
So, after you get five hundred, no longer S T Rs are allowed. Is that what you're saying?
The way it's currently written unless they change the ordinance.
Hold on, ladies and gentlemen, hold on. Commissioner Baxter, go ahead. You have the floor.
Anybody that wants to talk to me about this, I'm happy to hang out for a few minutes.
Well, I disagree with you because I think public health-
The meeting has not been adjourned. We're waiting on Commissioner Baxter. Go ahead, Commissioner Baxter.
Oh, okay. So, totally unrelated topic. Voting for chairs is next meeting, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And then second, something to cons- January. Something to consider, could we clarify in terms of yes or aye or here or present, so we're uniform at next meeting? I think that's something from you, Mr. Chair, where you tell us whether we say yes or no, aye or nay, here or present.
You mean when voting?
Maybe it doesn't make any difference, but I think it'd be nice if everyone spoke one more.
We can clarify, we can define it, but you know, if it's aye or yes, that's kind of same.
Personal preference. Sounds good.
But uh, but if, if, if there's a definition, we can, we can give our definitions, but if there's not anything-
I next time in that case. I'll consult with Robert's rules if that's what the chairman wants me to do.
If there's not anything else, this meeting is adjourned.